Can I have all the aldermen back, please? It is now 7:04 and we're going to go ahead and start our city council meeting. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Donaworth.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Hayes.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Guzman.
Present.
Alderman Martinez.
Present.
Alderman Felix.
Present.
Mayor Taylor.
Present.
You have a quorum, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Today, the invocation will also be given by Pastor Alex Solar. He's doing double duty tonight. He and his wife are here and they're both from Vertical Encounter Church in North Chicago in Waukegan. And I just want to thank you for everything you do for our community and how much you have participated in the faith-based program, and thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for this opportunity. I'm just going to pray and open up in prayer, but I also just want to encourage all of you and thank you for coming out. I know that typically Monday nights are difficult for a lot of people and it's a big deal that you're here. Regardless of what perspective you're bringing tonight, your voice matters. It's important and really just glad to see everybody here today. And so if you feel comfortable bowing your heads and closing your eyes, you can do so with me at this time. Heavenly Father, God, we've just come before you in this space, recognizing your greatness, your sovereignty. God, you are above everything else. You created the universe and we didn't. So, God, that means there's no problem that you can't fix. There's no community that you can't heal, Father. And so, God, before we get into business, before we get into the agenda, I just cry out to you and I ask you, Father, to bring wisdom to this meeting, bring grace and openness, Father, that we could, would listen more than speaking as your word commands us, God. And I just pray over our city officials. I pray over the community members here today, the leadership, whether it be in the for-profit or nonprofit world, God, you've, I believe all of us are moving towards a goal. So I pray for understanding, that we would see the common ground, Father, that we all have in common, and pray that you just bless this meeting. God, I know there are probably going to be some tough conversations, I would imagine. Father, there are probably some hurt and some pain, maybe a little bit of anger to be expressed. And, God, even through those things, we pray for productivity so that we would be that city of progress that we profess to be. So, God, we just honor you in this time before anything else. We submit to you our ideas. We submit to you our creativity. We submit to you our plans. We submit to you the budgets and the organizations and the visions that we have. And, God, we just pray over our city that we love so dearly. And, God, I submit to you all this in the name of Jesus. Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome, everyone, to our July 1 city council meeting. Again, I will remind people that our agendas come out the Friday before our Monday meetings, which are the first and third Mondays of the month. Please pay attention to the agenda so you know what's going to be on there, and if you have questions or anything, you can, you're more than welcome to call. Some general comments. I just want to say, yesterday, we had our Independence Day Parade. It was hosted by the Waukegan Park District, and honestly, the weather couldn't have been more perfect. The crowd couldn't have been more perfect. And I just want to thank each and every resident who came out, how they made it a special day, and it was such a nice thing to see the community unite for a wonderful event. The Fourth of July is Waukegan's annual fireworks display, and it starts at 9:30 p.m. The fireworks are most visible at the harbor and lakefront. When celebrating this holiday, please do it responsibly by attending the professional fireworks show. As Fire Chief Paser would tell you, he'll tell you better than anybody how dangerous fireworks can be, and they are frankly illegal in the state of Illinois. The Fourth of July should be a memorable occasion for good things, not because somebody ended up in a trip to the emergency room. According to the U.S. Consumer Product Safety Commission, in 2023, there were nearly 10,000 fireworks-related injuries treated in hospitals, and there were eight people who lost their lives. Looking out at the men in this room, over 70% of all fireworks-related injuries are to young men and adolescent boys. Also, I'm sure some of you heard in the news this week what happened in Griffin, Indiana, where somebody put fireworks into a container with concrete. The fireworks misfired and seven homes were damaged and people were injured because of concrete flying like shafnel in the air. So please keep that in mind. We all live in residential communities here. We're close together. Please, some of these fireworks are way too big to be used in residential communities. Don't take that chance of hurting your neighbors or hurting yourself. But I'm also going to ask you to be socially aware that there are people out there that suffer from PTSD. There are dogs that are terrified. I will tell you, as a dog owner myself with four dogs, they hate it. They're terrified. I had a neighbor two nights ago that had them going off for quite some time. Dogs are scared to death of them. So this isn't just, you know, my dogs that are afraid. There's a lot of people's dogs that are terrified by fireworks. So please, keep that in mind and just attend the professional fireworks. SCOOP is returning to downtown Waukegan on Friday, July 12, and Saturday, July 13. It's another fabulous event planned for Waukegan, for you can see classic cars, have great food, live entertainment. Friday's musical headliner is Eddie Domino, the nephew of legendary Fats Domino, and Saturday's headliner is hometown hero and favorite Rafael Mendez and the fabulous House Rockers. In addition, we have again added a second entertainment stage for SCOOP in the Steiner Pavilion at the Waukegan Beach on Saturday, July 13, and it'll feature free concerts with some of the finest gospel music. For more information about SCOOP activities, visit scoopwaukegan.com. This evening, the city council will vote on a youth curfew for SCOOP. So I'm going to read now what is actually going to be voted on. Persons younger than 14 years old, unaccompanied by a parent or guardian. Your hours are 8:00 p.m. By parent or guardians, 8:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. the following day. Persons, that doesn't make sense. Basically, you have until an 8:00 p.m. curfew. 14 years but younger than 16, you have a 9:00 p.m. curfew. And persons at least 16 years old but younger than 18 years old, accompanied by a parent or guardian, you're there until 10:00 p.m. We have another exciting parade coming in September, and the city will be partnering with, who knows, Waukegan nonprofit to support the Mexican and Latin American Independence Parade in downtown Waukegan on Sunday, September 15. The parade kicks off at Washington Street at noon. For more information, you can go to, who knows, nfp.com. And the festival that day, so the parade is one thing, and then there's a separate festival that'll be hosted by Puro Football. Both of these organizations submitted their applications this past January and have been coordinating with both city staff and each other to ensure that these festivities are fun and safe and welcoming for the entire city of Waukegan and Greater Lake County communities. As always, you can find our events and more on the city's calendar at waukeganil.gov and on our social media pages. You can also sign up for notifications and e-news on our website or by emailing thecity@enews@waukeganil.gov. Tonight, the city council will be voting on the Unified Development Ordinance, also known as the UDO. The passage of the UDO in Waukegan would modernize and streamline the city's development regulations, combining multiple existing ordinance into a single comprehensive document. This update simplifies zoning, expands property rights, enhances economic development opportunities, and promotes sustainability. The UDO would align with Waukegan's comprehensive land use plan, offering more flexibility for developers and homeowners while addressing climate impact concerns. By reducing the number of zoning districts, eliminating minimum parking requirements, and incorporating community feedback, the UDO aims to create a more user-friendly and forward-thinking approach to urban development in Waukegan. Something I'm particularly passionate about is being a supporter of the arts. Many of you know that Waukegan is very, very an art-based community. Our city is currently seeking proposals for artists for crosswalk murals around downtown. The application is open on June 14 and will be closed on July 8. We will do a city crosswalk to kick off this project in late July, so keep an ear out for, to be a part of that. If you're interested in being an artist represented for your own or for more information, please visit or call the Artist Packet at waukeganil.gov/1042/callforartists. This project is funded through the Energy Transition Community Grant. As part of the Waukegan Police Department's Summer Initiative, the police launched a comprehensive plan with increased police presence to address crime and violence proactively across all city divisions. This means a significant uptake in our traffic enforcement in our neighborhoods. I want to thank Chief Navarro for his leadership in this area this summer, and we have children out of school, and the police are working around the clock to keep our most vulnerable citizens safe all summer long. I will have the chief come up in a couple minutes and expand on some of this. I want to send out my condolences to the family and friends of Larry McShane. Some of you in the community know Larry. He was actually a library board member for a while. He was born in Waukegan in 1952 and spent his entire lifetime here in our city. I know members of our staff know him. He's been around for quite some time and involved in the city, and he will be sorely missed. Finally, some exciting news. Those of you who have been watching TV, you know this little romance that's been going on in Waukegan between Blaze and Pepper are piping plovers. It's pretty much like, you know, the new love story that's going on. They returned to their release site in May, found love, and now we have four eggs. Our monitors are thrilled to witness three of the four eggs hatching the other morning, and the chicks have a challenging journey ahead. For those of you who have seen pictures, you may think they're bigger than they are. They're actually very, very small birds, and that's why we keep them very protected until they're able to be on their own. We hope by supporting them and isolating them that it gives them a better chance of survival. But I think every news channel this weekend covered the romance of Blaze and Pepper, so keep watching that. That concludes my mayor's comments. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, ma'am. Up close, we, up next, we have your resolution, proclamations, presentation, and appointments. And I believe you have a resolution regarding the Waukegan Library.
Yes. Can I have a first and a second to the resolution?
Aye, so move.
Second.
Okay, so that was Alderman Guzman and Alderman Florian. All those in favor?
Aye.
We only need a voice count on that one, right? Yeah. Okay. I'm going to have Brett Mitchell stand up so everybody can meet him. Turn around so they know who you are. But... He is new to the Waukegan Library Board, so he has not been on the board before, and we so graciously thank you for accepting to be on the Waukegan Library Board. So thank you very much for contributing to the community. The second resolution is to appoint Yolanda Mongram to the Waukegan Library Board. Can I have a first and a second to that?
First.
Alderman Newsom was first. Alderman Florian was second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, Yolanda, would you like to stand up? Thank you. Got to turn around. We just want to put you on the spot and embarrass you now. These two people have volunteered their time to be part of the library board, and again, as a community, we're very grateful that they're willing to do this. We need volunteers. If any of you are interested in being on any of our boards, please go on our website. You can find out about the different boards. Please let us know. Give us a resume. We're interested in hearing and having new people on the boards. So thank you very much. With that, I mean, did we want to take a picture, David? Is David here? Yeah, let's do one picture with them. Margaret.
For those of you who don't know, this is Tiffany from the, she's the director of the library, and Chris Dutt is on the library board.
Yep, okay. Okay, one, two, three, smile. One more. There it is.
Alderman, we have 29 speakers tonight. Would you like them all to go at once, or do you want to divide them?
All at once.
Okay, we're going to go all at once. Okay. Audience time. Madam Clerk, you want to call people up?
Thank you, yes, I will. You'll have three minutes. It will be timed. I'm going to call you up in groups of six. The first six, and make sure you state your name as you approach the podium. Arora Flores, Dave Power, Alicia Coleman, Jane Waller, Laura Barano, and Rabbi Michael Ben Yosef. Arora Flores, Dave Power, Alicia Coleman, Jane Waller, Laura Barano, Rabbi Michael Ben Yosef. Arora, go right ahead.
Good evening. My name is Arora Flores, and I've been a lifelong resident and lover of Waukegan since my family arrived here from Mexico. Council, as you're aware, our community has been consistently calling on you to reflect our values by passing a permanent ceasefire resolution and calling for an end to the ongoing genocide of our Palestinian siblings. My understanding is that while we were promised we'd see a ceasefire resolution on the agenda today, this has been delayed for you all to collaborate on a new draft. While it's difficult to digest the loss of life and destruction that'll occur in the two weeks of time you've asked for, I pray you acted in an honest effort to collaborate not only with each other but with us. Alderman Felix, thank you for setting an example of what it means to build bridges, even through differences. May Allah reward you and may your peers mirror this commitment. I ask that you all commit to being transparent with us as you adjust the language on a ceasefire resolution draft. As you think of how to reflect the values of our city through your words, I ask that you look to the petition, which I've handed you, that our community put out. This petition received 900 signatures in a short span of time, a good portion of which are your constituents. It calls for an immediate and permanent ceasefire, humanitarian aid allowed entry into Gaza, an immediate end to all U.S. military campaigns in the Middle East, and an immediate end to all U.S. aid to Israel. I want to highlight that final point. Many still don't see how the murder of Palestinians is the murder of us. According to the Council on Foreign Relations, since October 7, the United States has enacted legislation providing at least $12.5 billion in military aid to Israel, which includes $3.8 billion from a bill in March 2024 and $8.7 billion from a supplemental appropriations act in April of 2024. Our tax dollars fund genocide overseas while we're deprived of life and resources here. The United States Supreme Court just ruled that people experiencing homelessness can be ticketed for sleeping in public. What is our city doing to protect the most vulnerable as we steal their resources for the sake of bloodshed? Waukegan bleeds from the same wounds as Palestinians. We have five superfund sites poisoning us and our environment here in Waukegan. Many of us struggle to pay for food, medical services, childcare, student loans, housing, transportation, and every basic need. I'm sure you can think of an abundance of struggles beyond this that our city faces. All of this is preventable. Please keep that in mind, not just in the next two weeks, but in every decision you make as our representatives. Reflect on my oppression, your oppression, and all global oppression intertwined, and do your part. May you all find the love in your hearts to pass a permanent ceasefire resolution that reflects the people's beliefs. Thank you. Free Palestine and free us all.
Thank you. Dave Power? Go right ahead, Dave. Dave Power?
My name is Dave Power. I am a Waukegan resident, and I am also an organizer with the Answer Coalition. I've been speaking up here since early May in support of a ceasefire resolution to end Israel's genocide in Gaza. But don't worry, I'm not here to shame any of you today. Instead, I will attempt to break down some of the artificial divisions that I have heard people suggest and which I believe are standing in the way of this ceasefire resolution. I've heard a lot of people suggest an artificial division between organic locals and organized activists. Alderman Florian, you made an artificial division between the local and the federal when you said, "I don't feel as elected alderman for the city of Waukegan that our voices necessarily will change what is over there." Mayor Taylor, you implied the same division when you said to the Tribune, "We have enough issues right here and I have to stay focused on Waukegan." These beliefs work to keep us divided, and they stand in the way of progress. Take the division between locals and outsiders. I have lived in Waukegan for nearly three years. Am I a local? Am I more local because my fiance was raised here? Am I less local because I joined an activist organization? If I ask a friend who lives in Mundaline for her help, does her voice carry less weight because of her zip code? Likewise, the division between local and federal begins to break down upon examination. My friend from Mundaline is a resident of Lake County. My friends from Chicago are residents of Illinois, and all of us are residents of the U.S. Our labor keeps this economy running. We pay taxes to our local, county, state, and federal governments, and our lives are affected by their policies. Even the foreign policy of our government affects our lives through the economic and political relationships that our country has with the rest of the world. Now, I'm not saying these divisions don't exist, but that we are deeply connected. When people say that we are all Palestinian, it may not be technically true, but it is true in spirit. I am Palestinian because I am human. I have the capacity for suffering and also for love. I have a strong sense of justice, and I have a determination to stand for what is right. Over a week ago, I was petitioning outside of my local Aldi. I told a woman maybe a little older than me with large sunglasses that we were petitioning city council for a ceasefire and that people have said that this was a divisive issue. She looked me in the eyes and very seriously said, "It's not divisive. It's the furthest thing from it." This movement for a ceasefire has united people across race and gender, across religion and locality. It has united people to work for peace and justice. Isn't that a movement that deserves our support? If so, then I urge you, come up with a resolution for a ceasefire that ends this genocide and affirms the humanity of the Palestinian people. Do it to create just a little more peace and a little more justice, because those things help us all.
Thank you. Alicia Coleman.
Good evening, everyone. Can I get personal with you guys today? City of Waukegan, I am here tonight because I am in debt, and I'm here to make a hefty down payment. I am in debt for all the blessings the Creator has bestowed upon me and how others have come to the aid of my family. You see, my husband was an innocent 17-year-old sentenced to life with no possibility of parole, but due to an outpour of love, support, and good deeds from a relatively small number of people, my husband has been absolved of his life sentence. His life, in essence, has been spared. My family had exhausted all the means available to us, and when all we had left were our cries and our prayers in the middle of the night, that's when we witnessed nothing less than a miracle. Brothers and sisters who are regarded as humanitarians came to our aid and used all the resources at their fingertips to fight against a grave political injustice. They realized the power of their pen, and they used it to stand in solidarity. City of Waukegan, how many lives could you spare tonight with just a stroke of your pen? It's inhumane how many Palestinian families are being lost and torn apart at the seams. And the resource you have at your fingertips, a ceasefire resolution, could be the impetus needed to tip the scales for millions of people. Historically, Palestinians have used whatever resources they had to fight injustice and stand in solidarity with politically oppressed groups on foreign shores. When Angela Davis was in jail in the '70s, solidarity from the Palestinians were a major source of courage for her. And internationally, they were the first to express their solidarity for the community of Ferguson when tear gas and tankers tore through their neighborhoods. And George Floyd, Palestinians stood in solidarity. City of Waukegan, will you stand in solidarity with the Palestinian people who don't have food, clean water, or shelter, who are in danger of being wiped clean from the map of humanity? The impact of a ceasefire resolution would be monumental, a critical piece to a larger miracle. I know miracles are real. I bear witness to one. How many Palestinians are praying and crying in the middle of the night, who, like my husband and I, praying for nothing less than a miracle, who feel as though they have exhausted all the means available to them, who are depending on a few compassionate people, humanitarians like us, to come to their aid? We don't need to know them personally. We only need to recognize a great injustice taking place against our brothers and sisters and humanity and stand against it. It is obligatory upon us all. A ceasefire resolution can save millions and millions and generation upon generation of Palestinian people, because this is a genocide taking place. City of Waukegan, Mayor, Alderman, this is a call to action. In the grand scheme of things, we may be small in quantity, but let's be strong in impact with just a stroke of a pen.
Thank you. Thank you. Jane Drew Waller. Go right ahead.
Good evening. My name is Jane Waller. I am the co-chair of the Waukegan Arts Council. I am here to talk about what is going on art-wise in Waukegan. The Waukegan Arts Council is a not-for-profit, all-volunteer organization. The board has representatives from the city, the park district, District 60, CLC, the artist community, and art lovers. Its founding, its funding comes from donations and grants. The mission of the council is to recognize, support, and promote artists and artistic endeavors that make our city such a rich and dynamic place to live, work, and create, because arts are vital to a thriving community. They are not just a luxury. Art helps us to understand who we are. I ask you to look around at the murals that have sprung up in Waukegan and how they reflect a vital and joyful community. The arts also have significant economic benefit. They create, attract artists, with tourists, stimulate local businesses, and create jobs. I am delighted that the city of Waukegan understands the value of arts in our community by supporting art-related activities such as Art Walk and by actively seeking grants that can be used for public art installations. Last year, the Waukegan Arts Council initiated a re-granting program designed to support public art experiences in Waukegan. Four grants were awarded. One to three brothers to subsidize a performance of the legend of Sleepy Hollow, one to the Waukegan Park District to pay for the Soul Louis at the Waukegan Symphony, one to the Waukegan Garden Club to pay for the plantings at the Walk of Stars, and one to the Waukegan Public Library as seed money for the creation of a mural on its exterior walls. The mural project at the library is just getting underway. The mural joyfully expresses on the outside all the wonderful things that are going on in the inside. It is beautifully designed by two young local artists whose work was selected after a competitive process. As a lifelong Waukegan resident and the first cousin of the man whose name graces this building and who was a great supporter of the arts, I ask you to support the arts in Waukegan, take advantage of grant applications to ins- Take advantage of grant applications to install art in Waukegan. Come to Art Walk. Go to Three Brothers. Get a ticket to the Genesee. Stop at art galleries. Buy the art of an artist in Waukegan. Enjoy Tuesday nights at the band concert at the Steiner, and lots more. Waukegan is a city of progress. Let's use art to make it an even more progressive city. Thank you.
Thank you. Rabbi Ben Yosef.
Greetings to the mayor, to the city council, and to the residents of Waukegan. My name is Rabbi Michael Ben Yosef, human rights activist and activist in Chicago, and I stand in solidarity with the movement of the Palestinian movement. I'm one of the 300 organizations that's coming together at the March of DC on DC in Chicago, and we demand that all Israel's funding cease and free free Palestine. I'm here on behalf of the family of Marcellus Stinet, murdered by former Waukegan police officer Dante Salinas. Mayor, months ago, you were at the anniversary celebration of Justice Howell, who was murdered by Zion police. I was very surprised to see you there, mayor. This event was designated to families of their stolen lives. A sacred space for families impacted, a space for connecting and with other families that need to heal. Didn't you at all feel out of place knowing you had traveled all that way to attend that event, while you haven't shown up for the family of Marcellus? Still, mayor, I am puzzled why you were there, but now I know why you were there. You did it for your own political expediency. You showed up to show face, but it was not in truth. A leopard does not change his spots. A zebra does not change his stripes. That means, mayor, you are the same then, and you're the same now. You didn't stand for this family after he was murdered? You're the same mayor that refuses to say his name? You are the same mayor who was silent and did nothing to demand accountability for who murdered Marcellus and as Dante Salinas. As I close, may the life of Marcellus be a blessing to this family that loves him. May justice come swiftly and soon. All lives don't matter until black lives matter. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I'm missing Laura Barano. Laura Barano? Laura Barano? The next six will be Mr. Rayon Edwards, Sochel Baragan, Waukegan All-Stars, Harold Bedling, Monsieur Korsie, and Julian Ruiz. Mr. Rayon Edwards, Sochel Baragan, Waukegan All-Stars, Harold Bedling, Monsieur Korsie, and Julian Ruiz. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, council community. I know sometimes it sucks being a politician, because once again, y'all are put in a position, right? This is why I talk about doing the right thing even when it's hard. Stop doing what's politically correct and do what's humanly correct. Tonight, mayor, you spoke about a situation in Indiana. And although I applaud you for keeping in tune with what's going on around the world, but sweetheart, you got a lot going on in Waukegan that you don't even speak about. You're real silent all the time. There's no press, there's no police beat, so we just don't know nothing. You spoke about dogs, and God knows, everybody knows I can't stand them. And you talking about them being scared about fireworks, so what about me? What about my kids? What about your seniors? A lot of y'all tend to put these dogs and make them more important than human life. I get the love of your animal, I understand that, but damn, what about all the homeless people that's out here? We don't never talk about them, ever. But every time y'all talk about some dogs. So now the city is partnering with who knows? I may miss have pronounced that. That girl, you something else, because you did that to hurt this lady here. I ain't never known the city to partner with nobody as it relates to this parade. And I know this entity just started. And what I say to y'all all the time is, when y'all think we don't know or don't understand, we do. I'll talk about a couple of agenda items tonight. I'm gonna talk about B, the naming of the streets. Pretty soon, every street gonna have somebody's name on there, right? Every street? Okay. I'm gonna talk about C, y'all fit or approved the restructuring of this Ant and Mount compound or whatever it's called, structure. This is what I talk about when y'all get to writing these contracts and things. See, one thing that I've always known is you don't change choices in the middle of the race. So whatever they start with, that's what they need to finish with. And I keep on talking about this chief of staff being on that board. What part of neptism don't y'all understand? This city is setting a precedent, and it's disgusting, and I don't like it. When you talk about them kids in Barwell, when you talk about those kids in 200 Julian Street, when you talk about those kids off of Lewis on Wimmsburg, those are the kids that's often forgotten about. Those are the area that people be scared to go to and talk to and do the real work, because that's the work. But that's where I'm at all the time. Alderman Florian, I love you, you know I do, but they set up here and said tonight, you said that passing the thing wouldn't really do nothing. Well, if it wouldn't, pass this damn thing for them and show them that y'all support them.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Sochel Baragan.
My name is Sochil Baragan. I was born in Waukegan. I went to school in Waukegan for most of my life, and I spent a lot of my time in Waukegan. I come here today, as well as many other constituents, to stand in solidarity with the people of Palestine and Palestinians all over the world. I'm going to describe to you what a day looks like for you and what a day looks like for Palestinians in Gaza right now. You wake up every day in your bed, and the night before, you were able to go to sleep in your warm, soft bed. Palestinians cannot. Palestinians wake up on the cold, hard ground, and the night before, they faced relentless bombing. You are able to say good morning and good night to your loved ones because they are still alive and well. Palestinians cannot. They cannot even say goodbye to their loved ones because they had been murdered and are stuck under the rubble because of the bombings they face at all hours of the day. You can start your day with a fully balanced breakfast because you have access to nutritious, healthy foods. Palestinians cannot. The majority of Palestinians in Gaza right now are eating less than one small meal a day. Children are eating grass and leaves to quiet their hunger. Some are even tying rocks around their stomachs to quiet their hunger. You are able to walk out of your standing home that keeps you cool in the summer's heat and warm in the winter's cold. Palestinians cannot. Because their homes have turned into rubble, and they are forcibly displaced and forced to live in tents in refugee camps that are also bombed. Palestinians have froze to death and are currently suffocating in their tents due to extreme heat. You are able to stand outside, listening to the chirping birds and take in the fresh air. Palestinians cannot. Because they constantly hear the loud buzzing of the drones every single second. This is psychological warfare. Palestinians cannot take in the fresh air because of the smell of the trash and rotting bodies on the streets. You are able to play and laugh with your children. Palestinians cannot. Instead, they hold their headless children, begging the world to stop killing their children. You are able to get into your car and drive to work on the paved roads without the fear of losing your life at a checkpoint or losing your life when the Israeli forces bomb the so-called safe evacuation routes in Gaza. You are able to seek medical assistance because there are thousands of fully functioning hospitals. Palestinians cannot, because there are no functioning hospitals in Gaza. According to the Health Ministry of Gaza, hospitals will run out of fuel today. Stop being complicit in the genocide of Palestinians and pass the ceasefire resolution.
Thank you. Harold Bedling.
I didn't come here to talk about the Palestinians, but back in 1904, Pope Pius X, in response to Theodore Herzl regarding the Balfour Declaration, said, "The Catholic Church will never recognize the state of Israel and Palestine." And then in 1947, 48, everything changed with the Nakba. They pushed, I believe, three-quarters of a million Palestinians off of their property. They took over the property. And I'll get to my real issue. You people ought to read up on that, because it's horrible what the Zionists are doing. All Jews aren't Zionists. There's a lot of Jewish people that are totally against what Israel is doing to the Palestinians. I'm here because of, people are painting the exterior brick in our library. You each got two sheets on that? Bad practice. You don't paint brick. Brick needs to breathe. And when the paint goes bad, what are we gonna paint it over again? Red over what's there? Or you gonna change it? What do you think those walls are gonna look like? It's public property. Who gave, an unelected board, they're appointed, who gave them the right to decide that they're gonna graffiti up our library building? And I have one more point. There's a flag in your chief of staff's office that needs to be removed from city property? Bastardized American flag? Totally inappropriate. So please ask him to remove it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Monsieur. I've been a resident, and I've lived in and around Waukegan for a very long time. But here today, I'm with the Answer Coalition, which stands for Act Now to Stop War and End Racism. So with that said, I'm asking for you to pass a ceasefire resolution with regards to Israel's genocide in Gaza. Again, the death toll has increased. Again, half of them are women and children. Again, this is only possible with our support. Again, there's blood on our hands. Again, I'm asking you to find that piece of humanity inside of you and do the smallest thing and say enough is enough. I know somewhere here you agree with me, and I know this because the majority of Americans agree with me, and I've done so since at least February. So then, why the hesitation? Is it fear? Is it hate? Is it apathy? The truth is that the reasoning doesn't matter. When this is looked back upon, however many years from now, what people will see is the United States and us within it, supporting an apartheid regime committing genocide. And all the petty reasons and justifications for staying silent will fall flat. In the long view of history, do we care why people opposed justice? During the struggle against South African apartheid, during the struggle against Jim Crowe here, during the protests against Iraq, the Vietnam War, do we feel sympathy for the racists and the war mongers who perpetuated those evils? I don't, because I know well, I know then, as well as now, there was a movement, one of conscience, on the right side of justice and liberation, that was telling them the whole time what they should have been doing. So again, I'm asking for a just and permanent ceasefire with a path to statehood for Palestine. All right? Like, as something to put in the resolution. Not just a temporary pause in the fighting before Israel goes back to massacring civilians, but a return to the status quo, so that in a few years, Israel can resume mowing the lawn, a phrase that they use to describe the periodic mass killing of Palestinians to push down dissent. Not a weak resolution simply calling for peace when it's frankly just not enough in this sort of context. In order for this to mean something, the resolution must deal with the causes of this genocide. And it's a hard thing to do, but like, if that doesn't happen, who knows, we might be back here again, however many years later.
Thank you. Thank you. Julian Ruiz, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Julian Ruiz. I was disappointed to learn that the ceasefire vote will be delayed a few weeks to iron out the language when the issue is so clear. There have been many ceasefire proposals over the last couple of months, and usually the blame for them not passing is put on Hamas. But Hamas has been very open about wanting to ceasefire, just not under conditions overwhelmingly favorable to Israel. Yet Israel refuses to compromise. What Israel wants is an unconditional surrender, where they have said that they will only accept temporary pauses until Hamas is eradicated. Now, even the most recent resolution that's passed in the UN is putting the burden responsibility on Hamas. There is a strong push to delegitimize and dehumanize the Palestinian resistance by policing what is or is not justified resistance. Hamas is made up of ordinary young men. They are students, teachers, and doctors, husbands, sons, and fathers. And you ever asked, what could drive these men to risk their lives? And it is the state terror of Israel that led these ordinary young men to pick up a rifle and fight for their right to exist. It is losing a loved one because they were blocked from receiving medicine or treatment, or maybe they were killed for peacefully protesting, like during the Great March of Return. And in fact, over eighty percent of them are orphans. The media calls this the Israel-Hamas war, as if these two sides are equal militarily and morally. There's endless discussion about the hostages of October 7th, but not about the thousands of Palestinian political prisoners, or about the over forty thousand Palestinian people killed just in this past year, and about how Israel kills civilians, even their own, indiscriminately, and when Palestine has been occupied for decades. The status quo is violence to Palestinians. It is the violence of poverty and deprivation, as well as the violence of guns and missiles. Bringing it back to Waukegan, we don't want a ceasefire resolution that falsely equates both sides and demonizes people for fighting against their genocide. This will contribute to the violent myth that protects Zionism. We want a ceasefire resolution that affirms the humanity of the Palestinian people, that affirms a permanent and lasting ceasefire, that affirms a free Palestinian state where people can get what they need to live. Thank you.
Thank you. The next group will be Priscilla Rosendez, Parker Adams, Chelsea Felona, Yeginia Briscoe, Jason Ferrius, Brandon Anaya. That's Priscilla Rosendez, Parker Adams, Chelsea Felona, Yeginia Briscoe, Jason Ferrius, and Brandon Anaya. Go right ahead.
My name is Priscilla Rosendez, and I am speaking in support of a ceasefire resolution. I was disappointed to hear that a resolution is not yet on the agenda. People here have continued to turn out. I was also disappointed to hear Alderman's comments about whether a resolution like this one has a place in city council. This is a city that a city council would make no impact. We disagree. If you support a UN ceasefire resolution, then you should have no issue with passing one at home. Just last April, you made a proclamation recognizing the Armenian genocide. It says, quote, "We acknowledge the ethnic cleansing and killing of over two million Armenians, as well as Assyrians and Greeks, and the forced deportation of countless others from their homeland by the Ottoman Turks. After being forced to witness the massacre of their relatives and suffering the loss of their ancestral homeland, survivors of this genocide and their descendants found refuge and begin new lives in Illinois, from the political safety of about a hundred years." Palestinians are living in an apartheid state like Black South Africans did before them, like Jewish people in Nazi Germany before them, like Black Americans did in Jim Crow America before them, and arguably still face now. It was the resistance of those people and the international solidarity demonstrated in mass movements that dismantled them. Would you have stood with them then? You would know the answer by where you stand with Palestine now. That Waukeganites could empathize with the Palestinian struggle should be no surprise. Many of us have also faced homelessness, disability, poverty, and discrimination. It is in a far reach for us to want this genocide to stop. Would we not also fight for our family and our homes? Resistance is justified when people are occupied. From a United Nations Human Rights Report, Michael Link, UN Special Reporter, citing inhumane acts, arbitrary and extrajudicial killings, torture, the denial of fundamental rights, and abysmal child mortality rate, collective punishment, and abusive military court system, and home demolitions, said the international community bears much responsibility for the present situation. Quote, "For more than forty years, the UN Security Council and General Assembly have stated in hundreds of resolutions that Israel's annexation of occupied territory is unlawful. Its construction of hundreds of settlements are illegal, and its denial of Palestinian self-determination breaches international law. We are the international community. We bear that responsibility, and there is a mass popular movement happening right now that seeks to liberate the Palestinian that seeks to liberate the Palestinian people from occupation, apartheid, and genocide. It is our responsibility to speak up, to protest, and to rally, and to make our stance known wherever we can proclaim it. Yes, including our municipal government. You, as our city’s representatives, can be an amplifier to our voices and join the over 100 other US cities who have passed such a resolution in Illinois, and that includes Chicago, Urbana, and Oak Brook.”
Thank you, Parker Adams.
Hello, hi, everybody. The air in here is really tense. I was out in the hallway, and then I walked inside and my heart started pounding. And I was like, damn, I think that’s because people care. Like, they continue to come out, they continue to show out because they have something that they want to speak towards. Someone a few weeks ago mentioned that you guys weren’t here before. You guys weren’t here previously to talk about things. And I think the fact that people are showing up, that they’re raising their voices, that they’re expressing concern, that they’re expressing this concern out of a place of recognizing the harm and the heartache that other people are enduring, I think that means something. I think that’s something that you guys should want, if you already are ready, to see fostered and to see grown in Waukegansites and people in this area. I’m so often thinking about the resilience of the people here, and it always kind of cracks me up, like, the positioning of the stand, right? Because it’s facing you guys. And so often, when I’m speaking, and when I come here and I decide to speak, I’m thinking about all the people in the audience, all the people who aren’t here, but somebody who was here told them about it. They’re going to tell them about it tomorrow. They’re going to spark these conversations. They’re going to say, I was there because, I’m speaking up because I heard other people talking about this. I learned more about my community. I learned how I can take part in something, how I can create change, meaningful change, even step by step. I learned that it’s not just my voice. And that energy, those efforts, they’re important, they matter. It exists beyond this room, it continues to stretch. And for people raising their voices, it did not start with Palestine, and it’s not going to end with Palestine. I think the fact that people want safe communities, the fact that they want healthcare, the fact that they don’t want to be criminalized for losing a job, for not being able to access clean water, for not being able to have guidance and quality education, these are things that people shouldn’t be punished for. They should be rewarded for wanting, for craving, for asking for systems and structures that reflect the way we want society to look instead of what we think it should be, because that’s how it’s always been. And I think I continue to hear that people are tired of being accommodated to less than. They’re tired of oppression and the way that it sinks its teeth into your neck and just tugs and tugs while you slow bleed as you go through your day at work. And so I want to ask for you guys to continue to review these resolutions people are putting forward and to think of your role in ending this cycle of harm and violence. Thank you.
Thank you. Chelsea Felona. Chelsea Felona. Last call. Chelsea Felona. Oh. Okay. Yeginia Briscoe. Hold on.
Good evening. I’m Yeginia Briscoe. I have been coming to city council meetings. All you guys up there know me. I’ve been coming for years. I sit through these city council meetings, and it’s good to see people here. For once, it’s good to see people here because there are some of us who have been coming to the city council for years, fighting for what is happening here in Waukegan. I understand what you guys are fighting for. As an African-American woman, my ancestors have gone through a lot. We have gone through rape, we have been arms legs cut off, we have gone through racism, we have gone through Jim Crow. I understand it. I get it. I sympathize with you. Because my great-grandmother was a slave. So I get it, and it’s still ingrained within me. I went to a couple of state representatives because I was trying to understand truly coming to the city council where, as I said, a lot of us have come and sat through and sat through. So I was trying to understand truly, like, what’s happening? What’s going to happen here? And the state representatives told me that, yeah, they could pass this, but it’s not going to go anywhere. Either they’re lying or missing something. They told me this is a federal issue, and you really need to be in Brad Schneider’s office because that’s the office that’s going to make a difference. If you really want to make a difference, to me, why are you not there? When we come here, there are some of us who are here, Carlos Smith, Clyde McLemore, I mean, we come for results when we come. And so I appreciate all you guys coming, but truly, hopefully by passing this ceasefire resolution, what result is it going to give you? Hopefully, I don’t know, are they going to now stop doing what they’re doing in Gaza? And I have a darn good international background, so I understand what’s happening there. Some people don’t, but I do, and I get it. So I’m just trying to understand it. Maybe when someone else comes to the podium, they can explain that. Why are you not at Brad Schneider’s office where to make a difference? There are a lot of things that are happening here in Waukegan, in my opinion, that, please, come back, support us. Those of us who are here, right? 200 jillion Felix issues, right? Bad air. We have bad air here in Waukegan. You guys need to be here talking about the bad air. It is creating cancer here, right here on our ground. Come back for that. There’s loud noises, there’s homeless, there’s shooting, there’s speeding, right? Something was done for loud noises. Keith, I know you’ve been talking about speeding. Come back and support us for that, please. You live here in Waukegan, come back and support us for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Farias.
Hello, my name is Jason. I’m a Waukegan resident, born and raised. Today, I’m with the Party of Socialism and Liberation. Yesterday, roughly 1 million people attended a Chicago Pride Parade, and I had the honor of participating in the Feminist and LGBTQ+ People for Free Palestine. This contingent was organized by the Gay Liberation Network. The first person I met yesterday was a young father from Jewish Voice for Peace, who marched alongside his partner and his child. From his stroller, his son chanted, “Free, Free Palestine.” Early on, I let him play on my drum that I brought with me. Alongside Jewish Voice for Peace, the Party for Socialism and Liberation marched alongside the Illinois Coalition for Human Rights, Stop Trans Genocide, If Not Now, Songs for Ceasefire, Chicago Area Peace Action, and many, many more. At a time when the rights of LGBTQ people are being threatened in the workplace, schools, and medical institutions, our solidarity and collective struggle is a matter of life or death. Our contingent was embraced by hundreds of thousands of attendees. As I looked down to the crowd, I saw Palestinian flags, kufias, watermelons, other symbols of solidarity and resistance. I read signs that said, “Love and Liberation for All, Liberation is Intersectional, There Is No Pride in Israel-Pink-Washington Genocide.” The streets were flooded with thousands joining us in our chants for Free Palestine. So why do I bring that up? Because there’s still a question in this chamber of whether a ceasefire resolution will bring this community together. Yesterday’s Pride Parade answers that with a resounding yes. And the consistent attendance by all sectors of the Waukegan community for months speaks for itself. 900, 900 people signed a petition demanding for a Waukegan ceasefire resolution. For months, easily over 100 people have come here asking for one simple thing, adopt a resolution. Palestinian, Arab, Black, White, Latino, old, young, students, workers, military veterans, atheists, Christians, Methodists, Lutherans, Muslims, and Jews have all supported a ceasefire resolution. Yes, this is what the community wants. It’s the Palestinian cause for liberation that has brought us together here. Lastly, we understand our government is responsible for every death in Gaza. Israel could not conduct its genocide without US military support or political defense on the world stage. This resolution must understand this is a distinctly US-Israeli genocide, and that is why we call on our city council to demand an end to the US military aid to Israel and for humanitarian aid to enter Gaza. We have to end this disgusting practice of sending both the bombs and then the bread. We don’t want any language...
Thank you. Brandon Anaya.
My name is Brandon Anaya, and I have lived in Waukegan with my family my entire life. In my own time, I volunteered and helped organize events at our public library since I was in high school. Even then, I have always seeked to uplift unrepresented voices, and now I seek to uplift the voices of the Palestinian people. That’s why for the last couple of months, I and a bunch of members in my community, many who I have grown up with and interacted with on a frequent basis, have come to these council meetings to ask you, our elected officials, to do your part. We, the people, will not ignore the genocide of over 37,000 people, and we will make sure you don’t either. The ceasefire resolution is a start. We hope for something that is substantial for the people in Palestine. We understand reality and know you all serve the structure that is the US government, who somehow deems to uphold this genocide. We, the people of Waukegan, are witness to what you choose to be most appropriate wording to seek an end to bloodshed, and we will not forget. This is only one front of many ongoing actions in the movement to free Palestine. Another one is protesting Brad Schneider, which we have done. Our government is keen on using our own hard-earned money on these unnecessary acts of violence, money that is needed in our own communities, money that could be used on infrastructure and resources to prevent violence and nurture a better community. There are four super funds in Waukegan. Our tax dollars could be used for our own people instead of being used to end the lives of innocents. Yet this money is going into weapon manufacturers that produce weapons used on Palestinians and many folks around the globe. Weapons that although used overseas eventually find themselves in our communities being used on our own citizens. Our money is being used to oppress others, and it is used to oppress us. So we have the right to demand a ceasefire, to demand an end to this genocide, to demand your collaboration in getting this resolution passed. To my Alderman, Bolton, if you have no issue supporting the UN ceasefire resolution, then you shall have no issue supporting whatever resolution is put in front of you in the next two weeks. This is history, and we, your constituents, are looking out for our city to make sure we stand on the correct side of it.
Thank you. The next group will be Serena Sanchez Johnson, Clyde McLemore, Himena Anaya, Bruce White, Anthony McIntyre, Frank Pettis, and Andrea Moore. Serena Sanchez Johnson, Clyde McLemore, Himena Anaya, Bruce White, Anthony McIntyre, Frank Pettis, and Andrea Moore.
I’m Serena Sanchez Johnson, and I’m a resident of Zion, born in Waukegan. I’m here to write a poem, or to read a poem. Nine months since oppressors obfuscated, a baby carried, conceived in October, survived in utero, only to be bombed at birth. I loved that infant as if he came from my own body, I pray. Labor in a war zone exists not just through motherhood, but in every human sacrificed by the state. I pray that baby hear a lullaby of liberation. I am informed enough to show up to these council meetings, angry enough to speak on global injustice, and smart enough to know that the ceasefire resolution was moved to the next council meeting to try to silence those of us in Lake County speaking up. Standing up against genocide. More Palestinians will die in the next two weeks because of gross negligence. When you all decide to vote next week, know that the city of Waukegan and all of Lake County will be watching. This upcoming decision will be on record. Do not be complacent in the face of ethnic cleansing. Do not enable the ethno-state of Israel to continue enacting the same atrocities enacted in the Holocaust. To everyone here today, keep showing up and applying pressure. Let your anger ignite the fire for a change.
Thank you. Mr. Clyde...
It’s okay. Yeah, I’m good.
Mr. Clyde McLemore?
Good evening, council. I was here, and I heard that you spent over $1 million on an animal shelter over there for the animals, the dogs. And I rode past there today to take a look at it. I was there at 9 o’clock this morning, and nobody was there. The place was locked up, and all you could hear is dogs howling. Who’s there to take care of them dogs? You got a sign on there saying y’all open from 12:30 to 4:30. Every other department is open all day. Why ain’t nobody over there taking care of the animals? You spent $1 million on a brand-new shelter, however you did it, but nobody’s over there to take care of them. That’s one thing. Everybody here, I’ve been coming to the city council meeting before all y’all besides Alderman News. All y’all wasn’t even up there. You know, when I started coming to the city council meeting. And I never seen so many citizens ask for a resolution that comes week after week after week. Now, y’all know I’m Black Lives Matter. I stick with y’all. Y’all stuck with us doing George Floyd, Marcellus, you know what I’m saying? Shut shit down! If they don’t want to listen, shut this shit down! Find out where they live at. Y’all was at Brad Schneider’s house. Y’all was at Brad Schneider’s house.
No cursing for the audience.
Y’all went out there. They got mad. They called the police because the neighbors didn’t want y’all out there when y’all went to Brad Schneider’s house. These are public officials. Find out where they live at. Go to their house. Y’all, they gotta keep begging. I know Islam means peace. You know what I’m saying? But sometimes we got to go a little bit overboard. You know what I’m saying? In order to get the point across. If we don’t get it, shut it down. Shut shit down.
Thank you. Himena Anaya. Himena Anaya. Thank you, ma’am. Go right ahead.
My name is Himena Anaya, and I am a long-lived resident of Waukegan. I stand before you, like many of us here, regarding the ceasefire resolution. I want to speak directly to Alderman Bolton, Florian, Summan, and Mayor Ann Taylor. What is the difference between the young women and children here and in Palestine? The difference is that there are young women in Gaza getting their menstrual cycles for the very first time, and I can’t even begin to imagine how scared they must feel. They have no hygiene products and have to choose between drinking the little water that they have to either clean themselves or drink it. If that doesn’t upset you, nor the tens of thousands of children being slaughtered, what will? We ask you to pass a ceasefire resolution because if you don’t, then you don’t deserve to speak for the children and the young women in this city. I ask you, as women, mothers, and grandmothers, to take action and pass the ceasefire resolution. Now I have a few words for my Latino community. De nuevo, me llamo Jimena Anaya, y estoy aquí para pedirle a la comunidad latina que alce la voz y estén presente con la comunidad palestina. Yo no soy religiosa, pero quiero compartirles una oración por Viana Harley. Dios te salve Palestina, llena eres de gracia, el señor y el mundo esté contigo. Bendita eres entre todos los países, y bendito es el fruto de tu lucha por niñas como Jesús. Santa Palestina, madre de la resilencia, ruega por quien no rese por ti y por quien se olvide de ti, ahora y en la hora de la libertad. Amén. Les quiero recordar que como latinas tenemos en la sangre resilencia, y ahora más que nunca debemos luchar por los que no pueden. Ahora por Palestina... Ahora por Palestina y luego por nosotros. Si no peleamos por ellos, ¿quién peleará por nosotros? Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce White. Bruce, Bruce White. Bruce White.
Peace and blessings. Hello, Council. Hello, community members. This is Bruce White, W-R-I-G-H-T. So I'm here, this is my first council meeting ever. I've been a resident now, I'm from Chicago. I've been a member of Waukegan for over thirteen years. I'm a business owner out here. I've raised two children here. All right. I'm here to support a ceasefire in Gaza. I'm here to support the Palestinian people. I'm here to support the members of this community as well, who support a ceasefire. I'm here as a black man to tell you, I am affected, I am aware, and I do care. I do care for a ceasefire. I know there may not be a resolution coming here, but I wanted you to see my face. I wanted you all to see my face. And know that people that look like me care about a ceasefire, and we watching to see what is done. Now, the people I come here with, they tend to believe sometimes that something can be done through here. History has showed me, I kind of agree with Mr. McLamore over there. So this is my first step to come to a peaceful resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony McIntyre. Mr. McIntyre.
My name is Anthony McIntyre. I'm the founder and CEO of the Aunt Mound Foundation. A few things I wanted to say. A part of this structure, this environment, is crazy to me. Right now, I happen to represent around fifty or so young people who are working throughout Waukegan, and another three hundred and some individuals in other places around the country that the Aunt Mound Foundation also represents and puts to work and/or pulls away from shenanigans in the street that leads to violence. I listened to some of these individuals who were talking about the ceasefire and whatnot. I sort of feel their pain. I recall just a little while ago, we went to Highland Park, and we stood in solidarity with the individuals in Highland Park. It didn't accomplish anything. I almost felt like a prop out there, standing. It's a sad state of affairs when all is said and done. When we have these young people, and we sit out here and we tell them all the time that they should live a certain way, they should do right by one another, do right by their communities. One day, they can stand up there or sit up there where you guys are sitting and standing. And then on a daily basis, they see the total opposite of what we sell to them. The hypocrisy is pretty foul-smelling. Myself, I don't come to these city council meetings as much as I used to because I don't see the point in the bigger scheme of things. There's a lot of Oscar-worthy-winning actors out here. I say it all the time, Denzel Washington is not the gangster that he played in the movie, but he's very convincing. He looks right, sounds the same. But that's not really true. And a lot of people who we see that represent the concerns of the average person around here, they look the part. But when all is said and done, actions don't back it up. And we consistently tell these young people what they should or shouldn't do. We got a dozen or so of the young people right here from Waukegan that's just in here, right? And they're looking at y'all. And I'm notorious for saying that Democrats and Republicans gang-bang more than the Bloods and Crips ever have. My larger point is not to come up here, I'm not here to preach, I don't do it. I think it's more...
Thank you, sir. Mr. Frank Pettis.
Frank Pettis here, Waukeganite. The government of the state of Israel is committing, is committed to the strategies of collective punishment, continual escalation of conflict, settler colonialism, genocide, apartheid, and mass torture. Just today, the former director of the hospital in Gaza was released, and he described scenes of mass torture inside Israeli prisons. I think in the, in the United States, of course, this is an election, right? But in Waukegan too, what we're asking for is elected leadership that is responsive to the people, that is actually progressive, that steps against the grain, right, when power doesn't enforce that, right? And I know there was some, some conversation about our congressman, Mr. Snyder. I'll speak personally, the reason why I'm here with city council and not with Brad Snyder at his office is because his biggest campaign contributors in the last election cycle were AIPAC and the pro-Israel lobby. Not local folks, not unions, right? So I wanted to come for y'all because I don't think that those were your biggest campaign contributors, right? I think that you're much more beholden to the people of Waukegan, of this area. Right? We know that Netanyahu doesn't want peace, he wants an escalation of the conflict, he wants endless wars, he wants to start them, to instigate them, and to have us fit the bill for them, right? A million dollars annually is what Waukegan sends to weapons in Israel, keep that number in your mind. Okay? What we're saying is that we don't want our tax dollars going to those weapons, right? We need, in the city of Waukegan, to create a culture of repair, a culture of healing, a culture of authenticity, where you think what you say, you believe what you act upon. And we start that by joining the right side of history, right? I lived in South Africa, that was the first country I traveled to outside of the United States. Post-apartheid South Africa, okay? This is only going to go in one direction. You can't eliminate a full group of people through ethnic cleansing in 2024. It's not going to happen, there's too many eyes on it. We are an open city, Waukegan always has been, right? Affordable housing, health care, access to healthy food, access to a clean environment, education, those are the things that we care about as a community. And those are the things that we actually hear less and less about at these meetings. Those are also the same things that the Palestinians are being deprived of. Our community is lacking in them as well. Safety comes from love, it comes from investing in human potential, not dropping bombs on it, okay? War doesn't get you peace. Local politics is interconnected with national politics and international politics. We stand in solidarity with Palestine, free Palestine.
Thank you. Andrea Moore. Andrea Moore, go right ahead.
Hello, Citizens Council. My name is Andrea Moore. I was, I once was in Waukegan. I'm currently unhoused and struggling through homelessness, about two years now, me and my two small children, two boys, five and ten. Mr. Pettis hit on the nail. When we are going to address the persons that we've elected to represent us and engage on our behalf, we have to make sure that we follow through. I am someone who has diligently tried to advocate for public housing locally, and I struggle dearly because I do it alone. I'm actually in my third trespass case, criminal trespass case. I've gotten two not guilty verdicts, or, yeah, previously, but I'm in one right now because the more I advocate, the more there's a pushback. So this is, we're going to bring it back local. You're speaking about things that are really happening locally, but we don't take on our civic duty to engage with and call, call it, we see it and also be responsible for the outcomes that we, we feel like we're deserving of. As far as conflict interests, I'll just go ahead, and I think that's a good point to point out, Waukegan Housing Authority. Waukegan Housing Authority Executive Director is Charles Chambers. Charles Chambers is also the owner of Waukegan Housing Development Corporation, which was established in 2008, according to the Illinois S.O.S. record. That is governed by Larry Moore, I mean, excuse me, Mary Blair Moore, who is deceased. So on the Illinois website, there's a director who died. A lawyer, a registered agent, Grok, who has once been counsel to the city of Waukegan, actually filed this with the city, knowing this woman passed away. Eleanor Murky is the president of Waukegan Housing Development Corporation, but she's also the chairperson of the Waukegan Housing, Waukegan Housing Authority. Stay with me, y'all. We're talking about private and even government or public entities, and ones that are supposed to be engaging in housing security for people like myself who are very low-income and disabled. Also, a mother. Mary Blair Moore, she died in summer of 2023. In 2024, Brian Grok, registered agent, filed paperwork that says she's the active director. Charles Chambers was once the president of the Waukegan Housing Development Corporation, but now there's a conflict because he's also the executive director of the Waukegan Housing Authority. Which one is it? The board is appointed by the mayor. I have once tried to establish that they should not be reappointed. The resident commissioner, she is not elected by her peers, so she cannot be eligible for appointment by, to the, by the mayor, because she's supposed to represent her building. That's not the case. The fact that Michelle Oberton, she is co-founder of the Lyons Academy. Charles Chambers is the executive director of Waukegan Housing Authority, and the Waukegan Housing Develop, she owns the Waukegan Housing Development Corporation. He's the vice president of Lyons Academy's trustees. But Michelle Oberton is also a board member or a vice chairperson of Waukegan Housing Authority. You see where I'm going? You see where I'm going? It's written in policy regulation and standards that these people are supposed to do things on behalf of us, but we do not pay attention. We let things happen that are not supposed to. And the people who suffer the most, man. And then we wonder why you want to complain about what it is that you, in, excuse me. Your experiences locally stem from what you do as a citizen as well. I've been trying to hold myself accountable, my civic duty, engage, I research. I don't even really care about my feelings if I don't understand something for what it is written down in black and white. The people who have been given the right to serve us now want to control us. The people, right? Regardless of what it is that we identify with, or whatever box society wants to put us in, we have to understand that only when we all just do things reasonably within scope of ourself, then we will actually have the people sitting here more responsible, because we would actually come out and vote and/or engage, or, you know, not just when we feel some type of way, come to a meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Andrea. Thank you. The next group will be Lakeisha Robinson, Pastor Katie Freid, Elizabeth Marrero, Eduardo Celis, Margaret Carrasco, and Carlos Smith. Lakeisha Robinson, Pastor Katie Freid, Margaret Carrasco, no, Elizabeth Marrero, Eduardo Celis, Margaret Carrasco, and Carlos Smith.
Lord, Lakeisha Robinson, she's decided she won't be speaking tonight.
Pardon me?
She will not be speaking tonight. Lakeisha Robinson, she's decided she won't be speaking tonight.
Okay. How about Pastor Katie? Start. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Reverend Katie Freund. My family and I live on West Ridgeland here in Waukegan. My husband is a teacher at Miguel Juarez Middle School. I've been here before, you might remember me. That was May 20th. I want you to know that every time this gets delayed, I have to spend more money on childcare. I understand that sometimes things take time. I understand good stewardship, due diligence, and the crafting of words. I have to do it every week. I've spent a lot of money on childcare. You're pricing me out. You heard what we had to say, and I stand before you as a religious leader because it is our moral imperative to stand against genocide. I, in my undergraduate years, studied abroad in Namibia and South Africa. I am not naive, I'm not just a stupid millennial, this is genocide. So while this resolution might seem meager, we are hoping for the miracle that our local government will indeed align with our moral values. So you've heard me pray before you, asking for a miracle, and I'm here to pray again. My church, Holy Cross Lutheran Church, is in Libertyville. We have a strong prayer shawl ministry. And so, in that spirit, I have brought a kaffiyah to remember all Palestinians. I'm especially holding with heavy heart those who are Christian in Palestine. We have a strong olive wood artisan craft fair every year. These people who are artisans in Palestine have housed church members, the ones I am their spiritual mother towards, they have housed my people in their homes, they have fed them at their tables. We do not know if they are alive. So we have rosaries from them. We have Christmas crushes and statues of the Good Shepherd from them. We do not know if they are alive. So I come to present this prayer shawl to my representative. So if you feel so inclined, you're welcome to pray with me. May this prayer blanket be a symbol of peace and faithfulness in Keith Turner's service. May he be cradled in hope, wrapped in love, kept in joy, and graced with peace, just as he so serves others.
Thank you. Elizabeth Marrero. Elizabeth Marrero and Eduardo Celis.
I'd like to keep my last twenty seconds, if I may. If anyone has extra time or love, I want you guys to remember St. Paul Lutheran here on Moos. They have been graffiti-ed for being a queer infirming church. So Mark has come, that Reverend has come to speak on behalf of the ceasefire resolution here as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Elizabeth Marrero. I am part of the Board of Directors of a non-for-profit named Juntos. I'm here today to invite the community. We actually, we are doing the parade this year for the Vive la Independencia in September, September 15. It's a Sunday. So we're very excited, and we do want to invite the community to participate. I do want to take this time to also invite the African-American community as well. I cannot be standing here and celebrate my Latin culture without acknowledging the African roots that I have in the Latino community as well. And I feel that every year, we miss that part. And I want to make sure that this year, we do have representation to celebrate the African cultural in, in our roots. Being Latino again, we do have a lot of influence in our music, in our food, our world, or dances. It comes from, from the African community. So hopefully this year, you guys join us, and we can celebrate our diversity and, and our culture together. So yeah, if you guys have any questions, we're here to answer it. We're pretty much open. We do also want to invite the community to also help us. We need volunteers as well. And anybody who wants to be like a sponsor or participate, again, the registrations are open. You guys can find us on the website under www.juntosnsp.com. Thank you.
Eduardo Celis.
I have, I have a petition. I'm the last one on the list, so can you guys check, double-check that, please?
Your time is now, sir.
Good evening.
Uh, comunidad de Waukegan.
Community of Waukegan.
Quiero darte las gracias por la oportunidad.
I want to thank you for the opportunity.
Que nos han brindado.
That you have given us.
Para el desfile de Independencia 2024.
For the Independence Parade 2024.
Es un reto.
It's an honor.
Para nosotros.
For us.
Y pedimos su ayuda.
And we ask for your help.
Nosotros hemos hecho.
Uh, we have.
El desfile en Kenosha.
The parade in Kenosha.
Y siempre ha sido un éxito.
And it was great success.
Y queremos que este en Waukegan también lo sea.
And we also want to have a great success in Waukegan.
Quiero invitar.
I want to invite you.
Participantes.
Participants.
Voluntarios.
Volunteers.
Que nos ayuden.
That you help us.
A que todo sea un éxito otra vez.
That everything's a success again.
Parte del dinero.
Part of the money.
Que recaudemos con este desfile.
That we have collected with this parade.
Lo estaremos dando.
We are giving it.
En becas.
Becas.
Scholarships.
Scholarships.
Scholarships, thank you.
Scholarships para los estudiantes del programa bilingüe.
For the bilingual programs for students.
Así que buscamos la participación.
That's why we are looking for a participation.
Y el apoyo.
And the support.
De todos ustedes.
Of all of you guys.
También le hacemos la invitación a todas las culturas.
Uh, we also invite all of the cultures.
And also, I want to say something. Thank you. Thank you. You are great translating.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Gracias, thank you.
All right.
First, on behalf of all Waukegan taxpayers, we want to wish and we pray that Waukegan Park District Commissioner and City Waukegan Chief of Staff, George Bridges, is he here tonight? Okay. Good luck on his, they had good luck on his second interview as he's applying, I believe it was in Mundeline for a job. Rewind, I'm out of here. And we hope he gets the job. Next, kudos to Waukegan Park District. Yesterday, the parade had 100 entries. It was fabulous streets full of Waukegan people. However, look at the video. You're gonna see our mayor, probably locked in her car. Her expression, her face is scared out of her wits, did not get out of her car, she did not walk the parade, she did not shake her hands, she left immediately. Well, Ann, if you're so afraid of us, then why are you bringing 500 new homeless people in buses to the Travelodge? We already got the state information. They're not going to help the homeless and all this. That's a lie. They're bringing in new people, okay? Next thing is to legal counsel. Okay, I have a picture here that I would like for everyone to see, and it is of our third ward alderman, Juan Martinez. He is in front of Weissfield, Waukegan Public Schools property during a city Waukegan event, displaying his political sign right there. That's a violation, ethics violation, sir. Okay. Then the next thing is that, and then, Ann, you announced that you're partnering with Juntos tonight. Well, here we go. Tonight, I am demanding from city clerk Janet Kilkelly to file a complaint, to investigate Mayor Ann Taylor and her connection with the two individuals, three individuals that just spoke tonight from Juntos. And also please the chief, because we've gotten complaints from the community that one of them's wearing a badge, that he's a law officer over at, it works for the county. I do not believe, I checked with the sheriff, he's not. To investigate Janet, one of the individual's family member is operating and selling liquor without license, and knew about it and has allowed them to, okay? Also, look into the extensive drug arrest and into complaints of sexually solicitation One of our Fiesta Spatios members was solicited by one of your little persons here.
Thank you, Margaret. Thank you.
To launder drug money. Thank you.
Go right ahead, sir.
All right. I don't know what y'all be on with me, man. Every time I come up, it'd be turned up. Always try to teach y'all street lingo. So today, the word is piped up, all right? Piped up mean on the block, it mean you turned up, it mean you lit, it mean you hyped up, like we got a lot of energy. So I want to talk about the two sides. The thing about being a politician, I think sometimes you guys may lose the idea of what's happening on the block, right? And it's okay, because sometimes y'all got your own lives and y'all come up here every other Monday and people get to yelling at y'all. Y'all like, I don't know what's going on. But it's connected to an actual emotion that's happening, right? But then for the citizens, for my Palestinian people that's teed up, y'all not piped up enough, you feel me? Y'all up here like the congressional, they don't care about that. Y'all gotta pipe up because they up there, they they jiving to be like, nah, y'all, I'm just chilling, you feel me? If you could come up here and read out your phone, they going to sleep. You see how they looking at me because I'm piped up? If you come up here and be on some real political speech, they not trying to hear that. You gotta turn all the way up. So back to you guys, using the word piped up. If they pipe all the way up, y'all gonna be smoked because you not gonna get the votes. Now, so it's two sides that gotta do a better job. Y'all gotta pipe up and they gotta pay attention even when you not piped up, but they not. So when y'all, when they turn up, now y'all gotta be like, hey, man, Carlos on live, he got 300 people. Now you want to call my phone like, Carlos, how can we help you? Because I'm piped up. So the the mission for y'all to do is connect your political position to the block. You up here chilling, so y'all gotta connect yourself to the hood. And the Palestinian folks is representing the hood because they coming in here like the GDs and the BDs. So y'all gotta understand, y'all know what that is, it's okay. They coming in here like a gang telling y'all, Joe, check it out, in a seven, four-point stand, like, what's up? Y'all gotta turn up, y'all gotta pay attention to the piped up, all right? I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Thank you. Fam, that concludes the audience time.
Okay. Alderman, I'm going to ask for one special concern is that during mayor's comments, I had missed having Chief Navarro talk about something very important that I think the community needs to know. If it's okay with you, I'd like him to come up and talk for just two minutes. It's about, well, if it's okay, he'd like to explain this.
I just want to make those aware that don't know, especially the parents that have younger children that are juveniles, we've been having issues that, one, are all over social media that can that can pose a great danger onto your children. And these are, these are called gel blaster look-alike guns. And if you look at that up there, it looks like an actual weapon. And our kids are out there playing with these weapons and what what they do is they they're 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 gel projectiles that they that they shoot out of these weapons. And although it's gel, it can still be harmful. There are a lot of risks associated with it, whether it's the eyes, the nose, the mouth. But other people, right, can take these weapons as being real and 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 an unfortunate act can happen because they're such a look-alike gun. So please, if you have children and they want you to purchase them something like this, please, please be be, you know, parental responsibility is so great and important here. There's other ways that your kids can have fun, and this just isn't one of them because it can cause a great deal of danger for everyone involved. So thank you for putting that up.
Can you say that in Spanish?
I'm sorry?
Can you say that in Spanish?
Shortly. I can't, I can't. I will try, I will try. I want to talk about a few other things. There's been some questions about an incident that took place on the 400 block of Liberty. There's been a few residents that have called us and asked questions on it. There was an incident where a resident out of a household there was playing with a handgun. The handgun discharged, that discharged round went into the neighbor's resident and nicked the neighbor's neck area. You know, I mean, that's very, very close, obviously within centimeters of possibly taking that person's life. But we, there were witnesses, we did have some neighbors that came forward and spoke to us, and we were able to charge that individual with numerous felony charges involving that weapon. But please, you know, we need to be cautious if you do have a weapon in your house. I'm not saying not to, if you have a legal weapon in your home, to take those proper precautions and make sure that they're they're properly secured. I do want to mention, the mayor touched on it a little bit about fireworks. We know, we do have a lot of complaints. The complaints are beginning to rise even more at this point. We do have extra enforcement that are on, that officers will be on the street. Remember that, you know, fireworks, to possess them is a criminal act, and also to use that firework is a criminal act. But also remember, as as the mayor stated, all the injuries that have been associated with fireworks. So please come out on July 4th and enjoy the fireworks. The city puts on a phenomenal professional display, and it's a beautiful thing to see if you haven't yet. Please come on out and join us. I I will be there and we'll make sure that, you know, your your safety is taken into consideration, and you will see a phenomenal show. We will be confiscating fireworks and we will be charging individuals that have those fireworks. So please, 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 let's let's be good neighbors about it and and come out to the show. You know, we talk about sparklers and snaps, and every year, the fire department has to come out and deal with situations because our children are using them. Just remember, there's a heat content to them, and we have children that get burned every every single year. So please, please be responsible when dealing with that. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Again, I want to remind people with these gel guns, these are sold on Amazon for less than $50. Some of them look so much like real Glocks that this is almost shameful that they're being sold on Amazon. That, so, more than you know. So with that, I'm going to give the alderman a five-minute break, and then we'll resume the business of the community.
I just wanted to say to you, have you reached out to the mayor? I think we should be able to talk to him. I don't want that to see bread. I'm thinking bread could be a good suggestion. Because you've got a problem with this, and that's why you're two years, and you don't want it. That's fine. I'm not asking him to be involved, but he knows it. He's saying, ask the resolution. I'm telling him, tell him he needs to change it. It's unusual. And he can't be, he can't be mixed up. Restful. But you got your son. It's great to meet you. Thank you.
Congratulations. Keith Turner. Anything I can do for you, just send me a file, and then your car, and a bunch of your own cars, your bike.
Oh, thank you.
If I can answer your questions for you, help me with some more.
Oh, thank you. It's so nice.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hello, House. Are you staying or going?
I'm going to go back this way. I'll let you go.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
That's great to meet you. Thank you.
Congratulations. Keith Turner. Anything I can do for you, just send me a file, and then your car, and a bunch of your own cars, your bike.
I'm glad you're here.
Can I have all the aldermen back, please? Going to resume, I need all the aldermen back. And I need everybody either be seated or go out in the hallway.
How you doing?
Good.
That's great to meet you.
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 Here, I didn't want that one out.
Okay. Um, there being no questions to the motion, roll call please, Madam Clerk. No, we didn't do E.
He didn't really want E.
Yeah. Yeah, so we didn't vote on that.
D, I said D, you thought I said E? Yes.
Okay, so, uh, roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donahworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item F, can I have a first and a second to the motion?
So move.
Second. It's Alderman Martinez, second was, I need a second. I'm sorry, Alderman Hayes. Oh, Alderman Donahworth, I'm sorry. Questions to the motion?
Yeah, here we're, uh, raising fees and fines, uh, under the new unified development ordinance, and I am opposed to, uh, increasing fees and fines, so that's my comment, and you can discuss or call for a vote, however you choose.
Okay, I'm gonna have both come up and talk about that.
Hi there. So we reviewed every fee as part of this ordinance. We looked at what it actually costs staff to process things, uh, what it costs for us to do our legally required notices, mailings, newspaper notices, uh, property postings on, postings on the property. Those were raised a little bit. Um, we feel that it should be on the applicant to cover those costs, not of the general tax, excuse me, taxpayer to pay those costs. Uh, we did, though, listen to the community on a number of things. So one of the things we heard was that the tree fines were too high. People felt that for a community like ours, they were not fair. Um, we looked at what other communities do, what other communities like Waukegan charge. We looked at what it actually costs to replace a tree as a city, what the value of a tree is to a city as infrastructure. Um, we did lower those fees, so we are losing money on those, but we figured that we wanted to bring fees that the city council would approve, and that is our recommendations to staff.
And if I may add to that, none of those fees include the cost for staff time. It's just the actual cost for the postage for mailing certified mail, the cost for advertising in English and Spanish in the newspapers. We studied over the course of a year how much it actually cost us on average for projects. So these are very informed numbers, they're not just random numbers that we selected.
So you, so you reduced the hyper exorbitant fines for cutting down a tree. I agree with that, obviously, I spoke to it. Um, but other, um, fees and fines increased because there might be some staff costs, labor costs?
We did not include any staff costs.
Okay, so what, what was the?
Calculated over the cost of a year what it cost us for each application for certified mail, which is required for public notice, for every property within 250 feet of a petition. We are required by state law to advertise in English language newspaper and the Spanish language newspaper. And we also provide posters, which we actually didn't include the cost of, but we have to pay for those posters to be created. Those are actual costs that come out of the city's budget, out of the taxpayer budget, not including staff time, not including legal costs. We averaged those costs for, for public notice for each application over the course of, I think it was actually a 13 or 14 month period, more than a year. Came up with what the average was across applications and set this fee schedule based on that. It does not include staff time.
Thank you, Noel, you're always so thorough. Thank you for your information.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
No.
Donahworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
So Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item G, can I have a first and a second to the motion? First, Alderman Florian, I need a second.
Second.
Oh, was that Alderman Donahworth or Hayes? Okay, Hayes. And, um, the, any que, what's the question to this motion? Alderman Turner, you had questions to this?
If, if I called G, I, I don't recall, but I, I don't have any objections to question or item G, so we can move on. We can go, call and roll.
There being no questions to the motion, um, roll call please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donahworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item H, can I have a first and a second to the motion?
First.
Okay, Alderman Martinez was first, Alderman Hayes was second. Um, questions to the motion?
Yes, ma'am, as I stated in committee, um, this, uh, mo, this motion, this ordinance requires a restriction, or calls for a restriction of, uh, sales of food from food trucks on private property, and I certainly can, uh, agree with, uh, regulating sales and, and usage of public property, but I don't, I don't see the necessity, I don't think it's correct, I don't think it's proper that we regulate what's being done on private property. It's private property, right, so, and I support private property rights, I support business development and business expansion, business growth and business doing business. So, uh, I noted this is probably gonna pass, but I just, I need to go on record, uh, with my objections and explain why.
Okay. The reason for this ordinance is because they're, are using private parking lots and having food vendors who don't pay the same fees as brick and mortar stores that are brick and mortar restaurants that have, um, that are selling food. So this is to save them, um, being in competition with brick and mortar places.
That's what business is, ma'am, it's competition. So, again, I express my displeasure with it, my objections, and call for the vote.
Okay, roll call please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
No.
Was that no, sir?
No.
Donahworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We pulled aye, correct? Okay.
No. Well, I pulled it originally, but then I said only J, you know?
Okay, we did aye. I didn't think we did aye.
Did we do aye?
No, we didn't. Okay, um, am I correct, Madam Clerk, we didn't do aye? Not yet. Okay. Um, can I have a first and a second to the motion?
First.
Okay, who was first? Alderman Hayes. Second was Alderman Felix. Um, this is an ordinance amending chapter three of the Waukegan Code of Ordinances regarding unlimited drink specials. Questions to the motion? Okay, roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donahworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item J, can I have a first and a second?
First.
Alderman Donahworth. Um, second. Alderman Martinez. Um, this is an ordinance amending section two dash 100 of the Code of Ordinances, removing the requirement for the annual adoption of the salary ordinance. And this was explained in the committee that other communities do not have this, that it is done as part of the budget, and that there's not this duplication. Um, Alderman Turner, was it you that pulled this? No?
No.
Alderman Guzman, were you the one who pulled this?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, me and the money.
Okay.
What is it?
Uh, Jay, it's the salary ordinance.
Oh, thank you.
That we used to vote on it every year, and then I was the one who, uh, said we should probably pull it, why do we vote on it? And then I had a change of mind and said, okay, we should vote on this because of the whole, um, aspect of, uh, what else is going on in there. And, I mean, if the whole thing about the ordinance with salaries, then it should, if it's gonna get stuck with a budget, then it should be postponed until the budget. So I'm gonna put a, a motion to postpone this, uh, vote until, uh, May 2025, so it can be attached with the budget.
Second. Just as a point of clarity, you, you, uh, I mean, I know that next year's an election year, and sometimes that affects things, but you may want to not postpone it till the beginning of the next financial year. You might wanna take, you might wanna ask to postpone it maybe till April, when usually the budget discussions normally commence.
That sounds great. I'll postpone it to April 2025.
Okay, so is there a second to that?
Yeah, I'll make the second.
Alderman Turner. Um, is that, that's all we need, right?
It's a, it's a procedural motion. Since you're delaying it more than, you're not holding it over to the next meeting, so, um, you have a motion to postpone consideration of something to a date certain that would require a voice vote.
Okay. Okay, um, roll call please, Madam Clerk. So this is in order to postpone it to April. This is what you're voting on. Does everybody understand that?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donahworth.
Aye.
Florian.
No.
Hayes.
No.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman. Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Item N, um, can I have a first and a second to the motion?
First.
A second.
Alderman Donahworth, Alderman Bolton was the second. Um, any questions to the motion? Somebody wanted this pulled out, what are their que, okay, okay, okay. Um, um, there being no further questions, uh, roll call please.
Alderman Newsom.
Nay.
That was a nay?
Yes.
That's a no.
Turner.
Aye.
Donahworth.
Aye, aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I have a first and a second to the motion for, um, item O?
First.
Second.
Alderman Florian, second was Alderman Newsom. Uh, questions to the motion?
Actually, I pulled it out because, uh, this was in committee of government operations and oversight, and, uh, we bypassed this.
Which one, P?
No, O.
O.
We, I, it was voted on, this one was voted on.
So which one was the one that not voted on? P?
P.
P, okay, I, okay.
Yeah, so this is O that we're voting on. Um...
So I had a, uh, objection on O as well, in committee, excuse me, in that, what we're doing is we're hiring a secondary engineering firm to review the work of the first engineering firm, and they're calling it a peer review, so semantics, it's, it's not peer, they're not peers, they're actually potential competitors, but, anyway, we hire someone to do, do some work, and then we hire somebody else to check their work.
That, that's actually the, the case, is that you're, you're hiring an outside firm to do the review of what a developer submits. Normally, that can be done internally, but there are times when either staff is filled up with projects, or the complexity of them due to something like that was constructed at Bridgepoint, would be so complex that it is good to bring in an outside firm to look at large detention basins and things like that. So it's, it's kinda, it's outsourcing something that the internal engineering department either does not have the capacity or expertise to do. It's not, they're not checking something that we've already paid for.
Well, that's not the way, reason, that's, that's not what peer review means. Peer reviews means you have a peer, like you're in a law firm, Stu, and you're reviewing a case, and you say, yeah, this is what I figure about this, and you ask one of your peers to review it as well. So here, in that same analogy, you would be reviewing a case, and you come to some, and then you would say, hey, you know what, let me give this to another law firm and ask them for their opinion. That's not a peer review.
I, I think that...
And, and, excuse me, I'm just, just that point. Um, and in doing so, you're getting paid, and within your law firm for your work, and now you're paying, and your client, city, is paying another law firm to do, review your work that we hired you to do in the first place. So that's, that's my point.
I, I think that Ald, I think that, um, city engineer, Arciterra, can explain...
Well, he's already explained it, and, and unless someone else needs to hear it again. I mean, I, I, this is why I pulled it out, specifically so I can speak to it, so the audience can understand my perspective and, and my thoughts on this matter, and, and my desire to protect our tax dollars. I'm ready to take a vote unless someone else needs an explanation.
Roll call please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Turner.
No.
Donahworth.
No.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Guzman.
Aye, to speed up the process.
Martinez.
Aye.
Felix.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, there being no ordinance, ordinances, all the person time.
Alderman Newsom.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, you touched on it earlier this evening, Mayor. Um, the Park District just wanted to thank them for putting on a spectacular Independence Day parade yesterday. Um, I think everybody was happy to get out yesterday after having last year's parade canceled because of the weather. And in my 21 years as an Alderman, that is the first time that the Independence Day parade was canceled. So I'm glad we were able to put it on, they were able to put it on, and they did an excellent job. Perfect weather for the parade as well. My other item I have is just a reminder, Fifth Ward Clean Sweep disposal dumpster drop is going to be Saturday, July 20th, 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM, noon, Greenwood in Delaware. I'll have this flyer on my website. I'll also be taking flyers out again. There's items on here that are not accepted, and if you have any questions about whether, um, you can bring an item or not, feel free to reach out to me at 847-390-2691. That number again is 847-390-2691. That's all I have, thank you.
Alderman Turner.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We got several, not a lot, but a couple of points I wanna make. Uh, first, I wanna remind everyone of Alderman Donahworth and, and mine, um, rewards program for information leading to the arrest and conviction of anyone illegally in possession of a firearm that would pertain particularly to our youngsters, our youth, as well as felons and those who are under a domestic protection, uh, or domestic violence order of protection. Uh, we have two $1,000 rewards available, and this program runs, uh, through Labor Day. Uh, I was informed that last Tuesday, there was a home invasion and, uh, sexual assault, or attempted sexual assault rape, uh, in the 1000 block of North Sheridan Road. And I, and, and many of my neighbors are very upset and, and deeply concerned that this information was not provided to, uh, citizenry, the neighbors, for, because in this specific incident, the, the, the bad guy, the culprit, uh, had been to that home previously, and had been, um, arrested for burglarizing the home or garage, and then he was, he was released, and then he came back, apparently stalking this woman, and, and attacked her and attempted rape her, had she not been able to make calls for help, and, you know, scream, and, and alert other neighbors who then came to assist her. Things could have been much worse. So, again, this is an example of what happens and what can happen when neighbors are not being made aware of criminal activities and incidents in the neighborhood, and I beseech you, Mayor, to start, uh, giving us the significant incidents reports, or take it upon yourself to ensure that neighbors are being made aware of significant criminal activities, particularly violent crime that is happening in and around our neighborhoods. Last meeting, the chief came and gave statistics, it totaled out in over 3,000, over 3,000 violent crimes that were committed in Waukegan in the last 18 months, and there's a dearth of information. We know we don't have a newspaper that does any kind of, um, relevant reporting, and so the only access we have to this information is to get it from the city, from our elected officials, and you're keeping it from us, so please reconsider your policy decision on that. Uh, Police and Fire Memorial Fund, um, I just wanna mention these, these, this is a fund, and they do three fundraisers a year. I think they do one in March, and then September and October, and this is to raise monies that, uh, they provide financial assistance to fallen officers and firefighters from Waukegan. This was started by two Waukegan police officers years ago, and, and it's, it's really, um, provide a, a great benefit to families that have suffered, um, loss of their loved ones in the line of duty, and I would encourage you to give to the Waukegan Police and Fire Memorial Fund. American Independence Day, Thursday is American Independence Day. I don't know why we have a parade on a Sunday in an entirely different month, but, uh, Mayor, our American Independence Day is Thursday, and I hope that you all join me in celebrating the day. We did a fantastic, wonderful parade, I was delighted, I, it was just amazing to me to see so many youth, so many parents brought their children out to show them and help them to learn, understand, and participate in expressions of patriotism, and I encourage the same from everyone. In the Sixth Ward, I'm putting out a dumpster on, uh, this Saturday, July 6th, uh, between 8:00 and 12:00 PM. It'll be at 7:41 Glen Florida, that's in front of the Dollar General store. You guys should all know what's available, what's, um, acceptable now, um, and if not, give me a call. Finally, uh, there's Sixth Ward Meeting on Saturday, July 13th. It'll be held in Upton Park, and that'll be from 10:00 AM to 12:00 noon. Bring a folding, it'll have four picnic tables, we'll bring you folding chairs if you like. Uh, it, it should not be a lengthy meeting, but I want to allow plenty of time for questions and answers and so forth. So I hope to see everyone, uh, in the Sixth Ward, um, and others, everyone's welcome. It's open to the public. I'd love to see everyone and anyone who has an interest in learning what's going on in the Sixth Ward and around the city. To the best of my knowledge, I'll be sharing that information with you. Thank you, good night.
Alderman Donahworth.
Yes, I'd like to thank the staff and the employees of the City of Waukegan, who I speak to almost daily. Um, they're fantastic, they, uh, they work with me, were able to solve a lot of things that we've been able to take care of, and some things move really fast, and a lot of people wanna thank you, the employees, 'cause they give me a call and they say I couldn't believe how quickly that street light was taken care of, or how quickly, you know, the branches were cut away from the stop sign, or, you know, thank you for having police in the area where people are going through the stop signs. And, uh, I've been out there and I've seen them, but that's unbelievable. They go through the stop sign at 20 miles an hour in a, a three-way stop in a residential area. It's, it's, it's crazy. Uh, we will keep an eye on that. Um, the police department has been alerted, I have spoken with the chief, and we'll see what we can do. We've also had some problems on Sheridan Road with motorcycles and Chargers and Challengers and, uh, the other type of cars racing from Greenwood north, and also south, too, on Sheridan Road, and then, oh, of course, the Amstutz. They start on the Amstutz and come north. Um, the parade was fantastic yesterday. My wife and I had a great time. We, uh, we threw candy, we threw these little stars. Uh, everybody was unbelievable, they just, they just couldn't believe, you know, everyone out there, everybody participating, everybody was handing out candy, everybody was happy, the dancers were dancing, the band was playing, um, and it was, that was the most people I've seen out there in a long time. So, so I was very impressed with that. And then 4th of July, you know, come on down to, to the fireworks, come on down and see them. Please don't shoot them off, I've had so many complaints in my ward of people, uh, shooting industrial fireworks out of their backyard. And, uh, you gotta remember that those fireworks go up, and guess what, something comes down, too. It doesn't all explode, and so you wanna be real careful, and, uh, and if you see something out of the ordinary that doesn't appear right, please call the police. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, I join my fellow Aldermen, and, um, kudos to the City of Waukegan and the Waukegan Park District for pulling off a great parade yesterday. Our great PR department was there in full force, announcing everybody. Thank you for being there. Um, it was beautiful weather. I don't remember ever walking in a parade where the weather was more perfect, so hopefully we can get that done again next year. Um, I know there was some concern about why we don't have the parade on the 4th of July. This 4th of July, um, Lake Bluff, Evanston, Deerfield, but everyone has a parade on the 4th of July, and it's very difficult to get people to come participate in our parade on the 4th of July. So I don't know how many, it's been a long time ago, we moved it to the Sunday before to allow for more participants, and people are, you know, most people are off on Sunday, and so that, that's what, as far as I understand, that's why the Park District has always held it that Sunday before. Um, I wanna thank the leadership at Public Works for inviting me over, um, and discussing the upcoming, um, changes from the Public Works Committee. I explained to them, uh, my philosophy is, as chair, my only job is to run the committee. I have no more power than anyone else when it comes to public works. We have nine wards in this community, they all need attention, and being the chair of Public Works Committee doesn't give me any more, um, attention, time, anything than the rest of my fellow Aldermen. So hopefully everyone else who's chairing a committee feels the same way about their committees. Um, but it was very nice to be invited over and get some ideas on what's coming up and the next agenda, and, and, uh, I look forward to helping Public Works succeed at all their missions for the next year in getting Waukegan, um, continue to be cleaned up, spiffed up, whatever we can do. Um, I had my first neighborhood watch meeting ever. I, I had been invited before, but it was on a city council night, so I wasn't able to go. The Burris Avenue Group held their neighborhood watch meeting last Thursday. It was very well attended. Um, I sent out an email the next day, or maybe even that night, of their concerns. I'm still working on all of that. If anyone else in the Eighth Ward would like to start or revamp a neighborhood watch committee, please let me know. I'll be glad to try to help. Um, I wanted to address a couple of things that were mentioned in, um, audience time, particularly about the pads shelter becoming a migrant landing place. Pads Lake County only serves residents whose last stable address was in Lake County. I'm gonna say that again. Pads Lake County only serves residents whose last stable address was in Lake County. So the intention is not to bring in migrants to, uh, the facility. Um, we have over 500 homeless right here in Lake County that need service, and they come first. Um, so, just wanted to put that out there. And then, uh, the clarification on animal control, Mayor, the, the 12 to 4, I'm assuming they're, they're out there in the streets getting dogs the, the rest of the time, and...
They are, they are there, and they are working every day, but they have not opened it to the public at this point, which will be the end of July.
Okay.
So that's why they're not having everybody there, but they are on the streets, and that's why they do what they're doing.
I know they have to clean up when they first get there in the morning, and, but they're not only working four hours a day, is my clarification. Okay, thank you, have a good night.
Alderman Hayes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, a couple of things, uh, like everyone else said, the Independence Day parade was fantastic. Thank you to the Park District. I can clarify that the mayor walked the entire parade route. Uh, Alderman, Alderman Florian and I were, were with her, so, um, to the resident... And, and Alderman Martinez, yes, yep. We all watched the mayor walk, walk the entire route. So the resident that claimed that she didn't walk it at all, uh, is wrong. Lake County Greek Fest is July 12th through the 14th. Um, each of those days, it's a, it's 11 o'clock to 9:00 PM each day. It's at Saint Demetrius, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, over off Oak Plain Road. Um, the festival committee, uh, is terrific, and they do a great job of ensuring that everyone who attends experiences all that Greek hospitality has to offer. Uh, you can take a look at it online, the food menu's incredible, there's music, there's all sorts of, of activities for kids, so it's, it's a lot of fun, and I'd encourage everybody, Greek or not, to attend. Um, planning and zoning, another, uh, just congratulations to you guys for all of your hard work and everything that went into... hard work and everything that went into the development of the, uh, of the UDO. So I, I can tell you as Chair of the Community Development Committee that I am really grateful and, uh, I'm really looking forward to the much more streamlined and seamless process of navigating that aspect of the ordinance. So thank you very much. Uh, lastly, uh, to the new members of the Community Development Committee, I welcome you, I'm excited to work with you and ideally, it doesn't always work out this way, it's mostly my fault, but to the extent that we can get together or just have a phone call in advance of the committee meetings, just to hash out any questions or iron out any differences. Of course, always take an opportunity to speak from the dais if there's anything you want to say, but, uh, just to streamline the process. If there's anything I can do to help or if you guys have any suggestions, I'm all ears. Otherwise, I'm looking forward to working with you. That's it. Thanks so much.
Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I just want to thank all staff for their hard work and it's long, extensive hours. And I just want to thank you for everything that you do. I just want to acknowledge, uh, Public Works and our engineering and our building department for the wonderful, wonderful job they're doing with, on McAllister. If you dry down McAllister, you can see there's no potholes. Of course, we gotta work on other parts of the city, but it looks fabulous. Many of you have called me and acknowledged that. And then I almost also want to thank, um, our youth is out, um, giving back to their community. Um, I believe Public Works have hired some young people and I've caught them out and took some photos and they're working very, very hard. It's good to see that. And I apologize I missed the parade. Um, many may not know, I'm also ordained clergy, so I had to run a church service. I was not able to be there and I wasn't able to cancel, but I'm, I'm glad to hear you all had a great time. That's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Guzman.
Good evening, uh, first of all, I want to speak about crime. Um, we're a city of, uh, 90,000 plus throughout the day, probably over, I would say 120 to 150,000 from all our neighbors and everybody comes in and out of the city. If you look at all major cities around the world, there's gonna be crime, there's gonna be peaceful places, gonna be poor places, gonna be everything. But I want to assure everybody in the City of Waukegan, we have the largest police force that we've ever had on the streets, patrolling the streets. We have a huge fire department going out there. Uh, we have four stations and they're responding as quickly as possible, so everybody's taken care of. Okay? If, if you don't think every city around the world has crime, then you need to go live somewhere where there's maybe five people in that city. Because we cannot control the emotions, we cannot control the actions of every single person. We try our best with investigations, but our police force is doing the best they can. Okay? So is there gonna be crime? Yes, there is. Is there gonna be, um, good times and bad times? Yes, there is. But that's what it is when you're living in a city. Okay? So when people don't talk about crime, we do talk about crime. We try our best. That's why we've added more police officers, more detectives and, uh, get them some vehicles to keep them, keep the criminals guessing and switching out vehicles so they won't know that we're coming. Okay? Food trucks. I know, I've had multiple, multiple complaints about them, that the city's looking like trash, uh, that they're everywhere, uh, brick and mortar, that they're taking their businesses. But we're trying a new, a new way of doing, uh, a new way of doing revenue. Like Corporation Council said like a couple of meetings ago, no city has the perfect food truck ordinance. And that's how come we've, uh, amended it, uh, this time and we'll probably amend it maybe two or three more times. So we're trying our best, we're just trying something new and a new source of revenue. And I understand the brick and mortar, that they're the ones who pay the taxes and they could just pick up on their four wheels and move along. I get it. I get it. We all here trying to do business and that's what it is. Okay? Um, the 4th of July, I, I'm also with, um, Alderman Turner. I don't understand why it's not done on the 4th of July, but I guess there's a mess and I do believe that, uh, 4th of July should be on 4th of July, no matter what day it is. Um... Uh, I, okay, so this last past week, I've received about, I don't know, over 400 emails on the ceasefire. Okay? And some of them, uh, have, uh, on both sides. On, some of them say do not vote for it, some would say vote for it. Well, it's gonna be on the agenda, the following, uh, uh, council, okay? And it's gonna be, we're gonna read through it, it's gonna be a neutral, uh, on my part, I'm looking for a neutral resolution. So if you think it's gonna favor one side or the other, wrong. It's gonna favor both sides. Okay? We are human beings. We are here protected by God or whatever, or whoever you believe in. And we, we will support everybody, not just one. Okay? And, um, like, again, 400 emails plus and a bunch of them said they're for my, uh, for my ward. But I ask them, okay, what's your address? I never get a response. So it's okay if you want, if you want to come over here and support Palestine, that's fine. If you want to support Israel, that's fine too. But don't tell me you live in my ward and I am your constituent and I am so on and so forth, if you're not that. Okay? Just be upfront, say, hey, I, I'm here speaking about this or that and just be upfront with me and be honest. Okay? Um... Willow Road, I'm still working, uh, on getting, uh, a response with, um, the township on when we could get a, uh, award, not award meeting, a, a neighborhood meeting to discuss the, the reopening or keeping Willow Road closed. Cause I've had numerous complaints on both sides. I, I kinda know which way the, the neighborhood is going, but I want to give everybody a fair chance before we even go. Like I said before, it will be two meetings and then the third one, we will vote and then that's which way we would go. And, um, you'll have your chance to speak on, on which way you want to go. Okay? Um, lastly, have a, uh, 4th of July, one more thing. I'm very happy to announce that, uh, I've been speaking with, uh, David Motley, our operate, uh, special events coordinator. And this is, uh, uh, he had a meeting and with everybody involved with, uh, Public Works, uh, Lisa May, the coordinator for, uh, the beach, uh, the Port District, uh, police, fire, everybody, so everybody could have a nice 4th of July, emergency routes in and out of, uh, the lakefront, in and out, so they could go in and out quickly, emergency vehicles, uh, uh, to assist. So if something does happen, uh, they'll be there with you as quickly as possible, but we're looking for a very safe and happy 4th of July. All right? That's it for me.
Alderman Martinez.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk and Council. I'll be very brief here, but, uh, I want to start, uh, by my attendance on, on June 22nd. Uh, I did attend, uh, Saint Lutheran Church Community Prayer Service. Uh, special thanks to Pastor Mark Rollenhagen. Um, hate has no place here in the world, especially in our city. Everyone should love who they want regardless of who they are. Uh, we are a community of resilience and the LGBTO community deserves to experience love fully, equally and without any shame or with any compromise. Um, I was honored to be part and president of that whole special event. Um, but special thanks goes out to Pastor Mark Rollenhagen for the invite. Uh, it was a huge success. I was able to make connections with a lot of my constituents, uh, so, uh, I'm glad that we were, that I was part of that again and, uh, hopefully we will see, uh, some changes there. But again, everyone deserves to love whomever they want and I just wanted to make that perfectly clear. Um, I also want to talk about my, uh, on, on last Saturday, I had my, my clean sweep success. It was very, very successful. Um, I want to thank those dedicated Public Work employees. Uh, first of all, Director Chris Garland, thank you. Also Supervisor, uh, Alonso Jenkins and two very hard individual workers, and I promise to get their names right, Ariel and Kevin, who were there from the beginning to the end. We loaded up almost three dumpsters, um, we had to actually turn some people away. Um, but with that being said, I, I reminded them that on the sixth ward, the, uh, Alderman Turner will be having his, uh, uh, his, his, uh, dumpster. It is going to be located, as he mentioned, uh, on the corner of what Glen Flora Avenue and Chestnut. Um, so it is open to the whole public, so I welcome all my constituents that didn't have the, uh, that didn't make it in time, that, uh, that Alderman would be there and you can, uh, bring your, 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 uh, your large items there. Uh, let me see what else I got here. Okay. And the time would be, it is gonna be July 6th, uh, from 8:00 to 12:00 o'clock. So, uh, that information is out and I will also post it on my, my, uh, Facebook page. Uh, for those who don't know my Facebook page, it is, uh, Alderman Juan Martinez III Ward. I welcome you to come and, and, and be friends and get all the updated information. On top of that, we also have a third ward page that we, uh, that we also have that, uh, that we communicate with our constituents. So the information is always out there. All right? Um, also just want to talk about, uh, our very successful neighborhood watch program. It was attended by a lot of constituents in my ward. I did open it up, um, cause I, I wanted everyone to see what, uh, the Tiffany Drive neighborhood and, and what we're all about and, um, it, it was a huge success and, and I think we have a few, uh, streets that, uh, are constituents who, who are inquiring about it and who are, who want to start their own neighborhood watch program. So I, I welcome that. Uh, special thanks goes out to Officer Kristen Luca. She was, did an amazing job. She answered all the questions. She does not sugarcoat anything. What you get from her is straightforward. So, um, we, we just love her in our ward. I mean, she, she was, she's an amazing person. So I want to, I thank Chief Navarro, uh, for that, for, for the statistic that he sent out, but it was very informal, so hopefully, uh, we'll see more streets that are neighborhood watch program. My main focus and goal when I first ran for office was to be the most, uh, the, the ward with the most neighborhood watch programs. So, um, I'm not giving up. So, uh, I would be diligent in that, so I, I, I gotta encourage any residents that, that want to be part of the neighborhood watch program. Um, I do have the information, um, so you can get ahold of me. Uh, my phone number is 847-390-2689. And then let me see what else I got here. Uh, moment. All right. And then also, I also did attend the, the, uh, the Independence Day Parade. It was, it was a huge success. I walked with the mayor and I walked with Alderman Hayes and Alderman Florian. The mayor was so fast that I lost her. I was, I was way in the back, so whoever said that she was, was in the march, that's a, you know, that's a bold faced lie. Sometimes you have to be intelligent enough to, you know, consider the source where this information's coming from. There's so much false information going out there and it, it, it belittles me that some people kind of believe that stuff and go along with it. I mean, it's ridiculous. Do your homework, please. Don't listen to what you hear out here, you know? Yes, I did have my car in front of, of the, uh, of the high school there. That was the time when I had my neighborhood watch program. I wanted to make sure that my constituents know where it was at and I apologize if I offended anyone, but it, it, there's no conspiracy here. Okay? There's no, I, I'm not a part of conspiracy, but I just ask you guys to do your due diligence and look where your information's coming from. Consider the source before you draw, draw any kind of conclusions, all right? Um, if, uh, let me see here, again, if you need to get ahold of me, I'm at 847-390-2689. I would also say that I attended the, uh, Juneteenth Celebration on June 19th, 2024. Uh, special thanks to Sylvia England. It was a great event. It was very well organized, it was very educational, it was commemorating, uh, the end of slavery. Um, also, I also want to thank Mr. Dave Motley here. Uh, thank you, sir, our media, media specialist. And also I'd like to thank, uh, oh my God, I'm missing a name. Uh, Niya, did I say it pronounced right? Naya? Naya Simone, okay? Thank you so much. Uh, huge kudos to both of you guys, all right? I think I'd be lost if I didn't have you guys on my side and I appreciate that. Like I appreciate everyone here, I appreciate, uh, the staff, I appreciate the directors. We got something good in the city, we need to capitalize on that and put our differences aside. All right? Enough's enough already and you come up here and people has their own, their own philosophy of how things are run, you know, those are just opinions, but do your homework, do your due diligence, get the correct information before you, you spread it out. I mean, false rumors. Mama always told me, you can't be all things to all people, but I'm gonna do my damned the best that a person I can be. Um, I ask everyone to have a very safe, uh, 4th of July. Um, please, please be mindful, be safe, but, uh, most of all, it's all be a good neighbor. Thank you.
Alderman Felix.
Thank you everyone for staying here and those who are watching online. Uh, the one thing I did want to mention is that I am online. I will, you know, I post a lot of my flyers, a lot of my events online on my Alderman page, on Facebook, also on Instagram. You can find me at Fourth Ward Alderman Victor Felix. I will be having a ward meeting soon. I'm hashing out some of the, um, last details. I will post it on the, on my, on my Facebook and also I'll hand it over to, um, Dave and the team to us, to post it out there. Uh, you know, I wish, I invite everyone to come out to the fourth ward. Um, one thing about me is just get in front of me and you'll catch me and, um, you know, we can solve any issue if we, uh, work together. And, uh, you know, so I, I welcome people to come in and I'll put the information out there soon. Uh, we already got it, it's gonna be at the Public, Waukegan Public Library, but I'll be putting more information out there. Uh, the last, it's been the last, uh, uh, long two weeks since we last, uh, were here. I did attend a few events and I did look at a few things that were going on in the community. I intended a, um, government and, uh, non-for-profit resource fair by, hosted by and, um, produced by Senator Rita Mayfield, uh, the Waukegan Township and the State Senator Adrian Johnson. We need more attendance. We need to, uh, kind of, you know, remind each other, remind our neighbors that there's so many resources out there that it, it's crazy how, uh, sometimes we don't have enough people coming out. We need more people to come out. Um, there's tons of organizations, tons of organizations that are helping the community out. And one thing that I did say, uh, to Pastor Alex here today, that, uh, you know, the lot of the churches, they were the original non-for-profits, they're the ones who were helping out a lot of the, uh, uh, communities, so let's not forget about our churches. Visit your church, visit one in your neighborhood. They're doing a lot of good things. Uh, we do partner up with, uh, Youth Conservation Corpse, YCC. They're, if you, you'll see them all around town, um, cleaning out your alleys or doing different things around the, with Public Works. They did, uh, go out into the fourth ward, they cleaned out, they cleaned out the, uh, back alley over in Fulton Avenue, did a great job. There was a mattress there, beer, everything, it looked like a mess and they cleaned it up. Thank you guys for, um, for taking care of that in Public Works. Thank you. Eddie over at Public Works, thank you. Did attend a family first center event. They're always do something in the community. Taking kids where they've never been out of their, you know, their block to events where, you know, you get to see them experience something. So part of, of, of what happened to me is that I got to leave my, my neighborhood and I got to see how the world works and other people in different neighborhoods. And it does make a big impact seeing other, uh, neighborhoods and experiencing other things, so kudos to Family First Center. One thing that, uh, that has come up a lot is, uh, the Julian Towers, the Lakeside Towers, the, they currently have only one elevator working. I've been asking, yes, I've been asking, uh, Chief George Bridges on the status. He's been working, he's been sending emails to them, but you know, we've been, I've been following up to make sure and I'm, I pay attention to language. We're working on it, only me, it can only go so far, you know, so, and I know that the Senator also has been, uh, asking for it. Uh, the state rep has also been asking for it, Rita Mayfield, uh, to see what's going on over there, cause there's a lot of complaints that come their way and my way. I can assure you that we are working on it. I know that Chief of Staff Bridges is, uh, always, uh, communicating me as soon as they get some information, so we're gonna try to get that fixed as soon as possible, especially right now with the heat. Chief Navarro, uh, it's one of the, I don't know if you can come up and I just want to let the people know about the marijuana laws here in, uh, in Waukegan, Illinois, but Waukegan, cause, um, it is legal, but you know, we, you sometimes you see people smoking, uh, where they shouldn't be. Can you kind of briefly go over what, where you, where people can and can't?
Yeah, so we, we do get a lot of calls from especially apartment complexes and those are, you know, especially those cars are up, those calls are up to the land- those are, you know, especially, those cars are up, those calls are up to the landlords. When you're in your private residence, you know, it is your residence, and you're allowed to smoke marijuana there, but you cannot smoke it in public. You cannot smoke it in your vehicle. And if you're in an apartment complex, it's up to management and what they put into the lease. And then it would be a lease violation, not a criminal act. So you cannot smoke marijuana out in the public.
In our downtown is also, right? I mean, unless you're in a designated spot, you know?
You cannot smoke marijuana.
Right, okay. Thank you, Chief. This whole time, I've, I've always asked, well, people say, you know, what's our role and what's not our role here as Alderman? There's a balance. We do have to do community work. We have to be out and talking to our, our constituents. And sometimes it goes beyond our district. For me, I've helped a few people outside of my district, because they come to me, they feel comfortable with me, or there's a language barrier that they come to me as well. There's a balance, you know? There's, there's the things that we actually, you know, that does affect, like the roads, you know, putting ideas out there. There's things that we do, but, you know, to, as an Alderman, I feel like there has to be a balance. We do also have to give our time and also bridge the connections to our community, the ones that are, you know, people that are coming in and out here. You know, and I think we should all embrace that. I do thank the Aldermen that are embracing talking to our community. To my community, you know, ask questions, and if you get a rebuttal from one of us, everything is out there. Everything is factual, you know? You can look up and have a good conversation, but, you know, it's not always going to go your way, and it's not always going to go our way. But if you have a good conversation, bring out facts, have a good, good argument on your end, we could definitely work together, you know? But I think, and do it in a peaceful manner. I don't, on my end, there's certain ways that people want to rile up the people. Most, most of the time, people just get in trouble, get arrested. You know, let's keep the movement going. I mean, nothing happens overnight, you know, to the people that are coming here and looking for a ceasefire resolution. Here we are, you know, we're, we're getting closer, you know? I'm going to work with my Alderman, and, you know, you'll see, once it goes in for vote, who, who'll put something towards, towards that conversation. So, you know, thank you guys for, for being here. You guys are part of our city, you know? So you guys are here every, every other week showing up. So thank you guys, and you guys think, you guys are being recognized here. And I do recommend you guys to keep coming, and thank you guys for bringing other people to show how things are being done here in the city of Waukegan. One thing that Juan Martinez, Alderman Juan Martinez, did mention is that there are people here that do activism. Some of them do a really good job. Some of them just are more interested in what, you know, in themselves. They say they speak for a whole community, but they're, you have to listen to people, what people say, and ask yourself, are they talking for, for the community or for themselves? So we have to make sure that we don't let other people divide us here in our community. One thing I did want to mention also is that we are going to have just one parade. And this, this year is going to be Vive la Independencia Parade. It's going to be on Sunday, September 15th, 2024. You know, let's get together, let's have fun. But again, there's going to be only one parade, and it's by Juntos, a non-for-profit. So, you know, there's no rumors out there, just one parade. And then if you guys want more information, reach out to Juntos. Be part of it. We want to see a good gathering, music. Everyone in the community is welcome. And I've talked to Ellie, Elizabeth, good people. She's, she's, she's wanting to work with, with the whole community, so we welcome her, and hopefully she does a great job. But that's it for me today. Thank you, guys.
I will just update on 200 Julian. They're waiting for a part on the elevator, and that's why it's been delayed, is that the, the part has not come in. It's an old elevator.
Well, I do want to say, that's why I had, want to make sure I get my facts straight, because they've been waiting for parts, depending on who asks, for three months, six months, longer than that. So, but that's why I have been reaching out to George Bridges, and he says, you know, "I've been following up with them," that, you know, "We need, we need more than that, just waiting on a part."
Things, and that's why. But we are following, and Corporate Council is working with them as well.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Alderman Turner, second.
Second.
Alderman Donanworth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wait, I changed my mind. Let's stay a little while.